Good evening, everyone. We're going to start in just about three minutes.
Hello, everyone. Good evening.
Good evening. Let's wait just one more minute. Good evening again, everyone. Welcome. It's Wednesday, May 5th, 2021, 6:00 PM. It's a regular meeting of the Pacific Grove City Council. Ms. Candell, would you please give us a roll call?
Yes, Mr. Mayor. Mayor Peak?
Here.
Councilmember Emilio is absent today. Councilmembers Coletti?
Here.
McAdams? Here. Paduri?
Here.
Smith?
Here.
And Tomlinson?
Here.
While we're present with the exception of our councilmember Emilio.
Councilmember Coletti, would you please lead us in the pledge of allegiance?
Happy to, Your Honor. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Next, we need a motion to approve the agenda. Mr. Harvey?
I'm sorry, Mr. Mayor. I need to ask that the council would please consider tabling item number 2A to a future city council meeting. Unfortunately, due to unforeseen circumstances, both of these employees are unavailable at the last minute this evening, completely unforeseen, and I'm sorry for that.
Okay.
Thank you.
And I have one modification to the agenda. I'd like to hear the item 14A. That's the Monterey Regional Waste Management District presentation. Immediately follow, assuming we didn't, we don't get there by the break, to hear that item immediately following the break. So we don't, this time, time-sensitive item. So with those two modifications, may we hear a motion to approve?
Moved.
Second?
And a vote, please.
Councilmember Tomlinson?
Aye.
Councilmember Smith?
Aye.
Councilmember Paduri?
Aye.
Councilmember McAdams?
Aye.
Councilmember Coletti?
Aye.
Mayor Peak?
Aye.
Motion carries 601 with Councilmember Emilio absent today.
Thank you. Now, it's my pleasure to introduce Carla Bitter. And on the agenda, it, we have Tammy Oliver, but I believe, Carla, you'll, you'll be making the presentation?
I am prepared to make the presentation. I, Tammy is joining us from another meeting, so I can be brief, and this is my first meeting. Thank you so much for inviting me, and this is really kind of the culmination of my career to live in a beautiful place and have a natural history museum that's about regional science in the community, so I'm extremely pleased, and I'm here in Vancouver, British Columbia, so it was a special moment to say the pledge of allegiance, so thank you.
All right, well, we have our city clerk. Would you, Sandra, would you please queue up the presentation?
Yes, we'll take care of that.
Wonderful. And do I control the slides, or does someone advance for me?
I can advance on your behalf, if you, if you'd like to let me know next slide.
Terrific, thank you. And this beautiful building with so much energy and, and history shuttered, of course, and we were thrilled to be reopening. Just a few weeks ago, we've had over a thousand guests, which is a stat that's not in Tammy's slide, on just the, the four weekends that we've reopened, which is a, is a real treat, and there's some good data you can drill down into for those stats, but it's a, it's a special honor to be joining this organization at this juncture to, to move us really robustly into what comes next for the Museum of Natural History. Next slide, please. Oh, my goodness, where we've been, where we are, what's next? Hopefully, there's more. Let's go into some statistics. Pretty simple, like the rest of the world, closed since March 2020, with the exception of one wild week in the summer and a handful of camps, which I, I can't really imagine how that occurred, but just a credit to the staff and the board. And a really excellent, in my opinion, hybridization of online programs with a young team of smart educators that just figured out how to get it done. And quite frankly, the capacity and the reach for online audiences reaching into the county communities we hadn't served before, it's really worth examining, how do we keep the best of that, so that we can, can move that forward and keep that engagement going when children can't always make it to see us, adults too? This store online was a big hit, and I'm very pleased to have just approved some restock. I think people were very nervous to spend the money to restock, but it's going robustly. And I think the more lovely merchandise we have about natural history and sustainability and working with really good regional vendors and credible dynamic vendors that have sustainability in mind is, is something that we can really provide as part of the community. Summer camps are offered last year, and then this year with modifications for up to 16 children. And the, the work on new exhibits was underway, so some of that capital campaign, the rubber hit the road, and within the next six weeks and shortly after, I arrive on site, we'll be opening the changes exhibit. Next slide, please. Financially stable, which is not something a lot of museums in North America can say right now. Again, a credit to this amazing community, the, the austere measures of the board and the sacrifices of the staff has us coming into the new fiscal year quite stable, grateful beyond words for community and city support. Tammy couldn't have said it better. And again, reopened with modifications Friday through Monday right now from 10:00 to 4:00. And slow and steady gets us where we want to go. I'd like to hold out and add another day as we add camp and we open changes, so there's a higher carrying capacity for the building. Watching Monterey County bump into that yellow zone would be super good, and we're going to be moving into very gingerly the idea of, can we bring back private events and birthday parties slowly but surely? Can we have a mini gala, a combination of online or in person? But right now, holding at least through mid-February, Friday through Monday, 10:00 AM to 4:00. And I'll just welcome myself. I'm very happy to be part of this community and, and to be leading this organization. Next slide. Income projections. I feel like this is probably self-explanatory, certainly, the bulk of support comes from you, the city of Pacific Grove. And I should just highlight here in my, my quick overview of, of the collections and the health of the facility, these are things that are intrinsically entwined, and so the health and stability of the collections relies on the health of the facility. So I'm really looking forward to working together on that relationship to maintain those two things in concert and keep them, stabilize them first and then improve them. Restricted donations, you can see makes up the next category on restrictions tied for second. Paycheck protection loan, and certainly that loan forgiveness loan certainly helped make it through the year with all the staff intact to the best of our ability. We're actually bringing back a furloughed staff member, which is also something terrific, and then a smattering at the end of important, but, but on the smaller scale, unrestricted grants, restricted grants. Membership is something that I'm looking really hard at, that I think is such an easy and tangible boost, if we put our minds to it, of really encouraging our members' admission as well. Lovely idea of expanding camps, stores, special events. All those little revenue generating things can really expand as we hybridize and are able to welcome more of the public back. Education programs going strong. I'm so impressed, quite frankly, with the, the, the level of education programs and outreach and community science for small organization. Tours and donor, donor, donation, door donations, and of course, junior naturalists. Rough expense projection payroll. Actually, I see Tammy texting me, so I'm hoping she's saying, just keep going. And perhaps she was delayed. The, the, the bulk of both, bulk of expenses, the bunny small organization, professional services, so things that, such as IT, we use Chinat for HR. There are some things that traditionally museums have staff for and a, a quite a small organization doesn't, so these are additional services, security. I just learned today about an intriguing situation with security cameras and, and how that all comes together, and transportation, we have the, the outreach van, just your kind of basic, basic supplies and things going forward, typical of an organization of this size. Next slide, sorry. And where we're going, just as I said, modifications, slow and steady, watching as we move into yellow and, and what we can expand to and what our, our audience is asking for. Welcoming public to the changes exhibit and very happy that summer camp is, most of them are filled. Some of them are half-filled, so we'll, we'll do a little push for that. And again, as I said, how do we keep some of those good online programs going and, and have some hybrids as we have people in person and online for the same program? And to me, big on our agenda is delivering on some of the wonderful plans for an expanded children's area as well as a cultures exhibit that allows us to move into a diversity, equity, access and inclusion initiative, and collections care. Having a 20-year museum career is very top of mind for me and an, an area that that's going to need a lot of love and, and, and time, so that's where we're going. Thank you.
Well, thank, thank you. Do we have any council comments, thoughts, questions? Councilmember Paduri?
Yeah, I would just like to welcome Ms. Carla Bitter to our wonderful town. I would like to see some Canadian thought processes, definitely going into the museum. But welcome, and thank you for the presentation, and look forward to meeting you.
Oh, thank you so much. I, I am a US citizen, so I, I can only bring what I've seen in two years in Canada, but it's a good bunch up here. Nice people, Canadians.
Councilmember McAdams?
Thank you, Mayor, and I see that Ms. Tammy has joined. I'm so glad to see her. Nice to meet you, Ms. Carla. Tammy, I just, I wanted to, to thank you for your dedication to the museum and how quickly and graciously you stepped up and you continue to keep the council informed and up to date. And I know that there was some transition, transition there, plus on top of being in a pandemic, and I just, I really wanted to express my gratitude to you for that good work. I do have a couple of questions, and I actually read the strategic plan of the museum, which was great. It's short and sweet. I would encourage my fellow council members and the community to read it, but as far as the six goals, and I picked up, I heard that you mentioned one, which was to have that sort of like children's focused area. Do you foresee meeting the goals of the, of this implementation by 2024?
That's a great question, and Tammy, do you, would you like to jump in, or would you like to take that?
I'd like to, you know, I, I can, I'm here to help, Carla, so if you've got an answer, go ahead and, and then I can help.
Sure. And one of the things that I proposed was to do a, a bridge year. So coming out of the pandemic and going slow and steady and seeing how do we recover, how do audiences come back? And I, I thought it would be very useful this year to consolidate those six goals into three and sort of scaffold some of those main initiatives under them. In terms of getting to, through that whole laundry list by, by 2024, I think that if we scaffold them and restructure them, we have a good shot at being in the direction that we want to go with some, you know, there's, there's no reason that we, we couldn't achieve three reconfigured goals that contain those goals, so I, I'll, I'll know more the next time we meet and have this conversation, but it, it was an excellent strategic plan and, and ambitious, so to kind of lose a, a good bit of a year of ground on an ambitious plan kind of calls for a, a bit of a recast.
Thank you so much, Carla. And then, you know, I also noticed with the PPE loan, you know, that was 12% of the revenue, which is sort of a big chunk. I mean, I think it was a top four, so is that part of the board discussion, how to sort of replace that next year?
And as the board member here, I can answer it initially. Yes, we do need to rebuild the ongoing revenue to replace the one-time sources, so it's like, I think we're no different from any other organization in our community. We are rebuilding, and I think Carla said it very nicely, it could delay our achievement of some of our strategic goals as we rebuild. I'm confident we can. I, but it's going to take some time, so the, there's going to be a bridge to a secure financial future, in my opinion. And yes, we talk about it, of course, but everybody's facing a lot of uncertainty, and we're no exception.
Absolutely. Well, welcome Carla and, uh, thank you, Tama. And I look forward to meeting you in person.
Likewise. Thank you so much, everyone.
And I just want to repeat the, the, the welcome to, uh, to Carla and looking forward to, to seeing all the wonderful things that the museum will, will be, uh, providing the community in the future. And, and to, uh, to Tama for leading the board through what has been difficult times for many, many organizations. And, and, uh, hopefully we're, we're now, we've come out on the other side and, and well positioned for the future. So thank you very much to, my thanks to all the board members, yourself in particular.
Thank you.
All right. Well, if there's no other comments, we'll, we'll move on. And, uh, pleased to have another guest with us, uh, today, Katie Castagna from United Way. Uh, welcome. And thank you for being here, taking the time. You, United Way does so much and in these trying times done so much more. So thank you for that.
Well, thank you very much, Mayor Peak and members of the city council and members of the Pacific Grove community. I'm very thrilled to be here to share with you some of the activities of United Way Monterey County in particular. We'll, um, give you an update on our two-on-one information and referral program as well as talk about the new emergency rental assistance and make sure that everybody in Pacific Grove knows how it works and how we can help. Um, I have with me tonight, my colleague, Kalissa King, who's our Director of Information Referral and, um, two-on-one services. And so what I'm going to do is share my screen. Again, my, my name's Katie Castagna. I'm the president and CEO for United Way Monterey County. And I have, uh, been, uh, have had the pleasure of, uh, shepherding one of our signature programs, the two-on-one information and referral service since we launched it in, uh, two thousand nine. And so, um, uh, for those of you who are not familiar with two-on-one, we're going to take you on a quick tour. And this is, um, starting with a photograph of one of our call specialists. This is Rosie, who is, um, somebody people actually will call and request to talk to. Tonight we'll share briefly about what two-on-one is, things that we've done to adapt to COVID-19. Some of our special initiatives last year as well as our role in disaster relief, most recently, um, in addition to COVID, of course, the, the wildfires of last summer. And then we'd like to share with you some data, um, uh, about who calls and what they're calling about. And then specifically to, um, the city of Pacific Grove, we can show you what, uh, your residents are calling about. And then we want to share with you how we, uh, fund and sustain, uh, our service and ask for your help there. And then, as I said, um, give you a, a preview of how the rental assistance program is, is working and how to make sure that we're serving any eligible residents in Pacific Grove. So two-on-one is a free information referral helpline, which is designed to provide information for people who need help, but may not know where to go, who to call, or even what to search for online when they need help and, um, need some, uh, trusted information and, and really direction setting. Two-on-one's available 24/7. It's free to the caller. And, um, in addition to calling and, and being able to speak with a professional trained call specialist, people can also text, uh, to two-on-one to have an interactive, interactive text exchange as well as searching our, um, online database at two-on-one montereycounty.org. So the, the way two-on-one works is people call, they explain what it is they're looking for. And our call specialists, um, help identify what resources are available that might meet those needs. And they provide the information about the agency, the phone number, operation and eligibility. And then the, uh, caller is equipped with information to, uh, go forward and seek the help themselves. Just a quick, um, snapshot of our, uh, sort of the volume of, of, uh, calls that we have been, uh, handling over the last couple of years. Um, uh, this chart, I think, really tells the whole story. The, the blue bars show month by month what our call volume was in 2019. And you'll see, uh, our peak months, which actually coincided with tax season when we're helping direct people to free tax preparation. We were hitting maybe a thousand calls a month, um, in 2019. And then the orange brings us into 2020 and you'll see a real spike starting in March. And, um, you'll see that that, uh, uh, rose and, and stayed quite high throughout the, the, uh, year. And, um, really reflected some of our initiatives that, that Kalissa will be, um, sharing with you in more detail. Um, with a big, uh, spike in the winter, in, in October through December, when we, um, unveiled a rental assistance program that the county funded. And then you'll see the red bars show what has continued to be an extraordinary growth in 2021. Um, so people are needing help, they're calling us, and we've got some specific programs that we've, um, been able to stand up to, um, meet those needs. We've, along the way, enhanced the searchability of our website, have done more with texting. We also have one-way text, um, enrollment. People can subscribe to information on a particular topic, um, such as the wildfire disaster or rent assistance. And, um, so we've, uh, certainly been busy. I will say just a preview of, of next month. It looks, fortunately, our numbers are, um, have leveled off and we, I think we're going to be dropping down a little bit, which helps in a lot of ways. It, it lowers the wait times for people trying to get through. And, um, it means that we're, um, maybe the need isn't quite as extraordinary or we're able to direct people where they need to go. We've got some special initiatives that have been underway and I, and, and ways to use the two-on-one platform. And I'm going to now introduce Kalissa King, who's going to describe some of those. So you can see in addition to the commonplace request for information, um, somebody that needs a, a shelter or food. Uh, we've got some really exciting ways to use two-on-one, um, to, um, promote particular community-based initiatives. Alyssa?
Yeah, thank you, Katie. And I'm really excited to be here with you all to kind of dig into these initiatives and then a little bit of the data. And so if you look at the screen, the first thing you'll see noted is diabetes awareness. And in 2020, we were able to add a new icon to our two-on-one montereycounty.org website for diabetes, um, in order to help direct folks to resources for that specific need. We also were able to assist with census outreach and then provide data and also direct folks to the kinship navigator. And you'll see, for example, that website listed that kinshipcareca.org specifically equipped with resources for kinship families. And then, of course, we were able to provide information in relation to COVID-19. I know that one of our days with the most call volume in 2020 was one of the beginning days of the pandemic, um, when shelter in place first went into effect. So we've been able to provide folks with a variety of information, um, especially in relation to stay-at-home orders. And then, of course, testing locations as folks have been looking and navigating that, um, system. Can we go to the next slide, please? Thank you. And then to dive into some of the special initiatives that we're still really actively working on. One is the Great Plates Delivered Program. Um, we're able to screen residents for eligibility and then collect their information so that they can be connected to that meal service. Also, the vaccine rollout, we've partnered with the Department of Public Health in order to offer a vaccine registration hotline that's available seven days a week, eight AM to eight PM. Folks just call in and then depending upon availability, we're able to get them registered. Um, especially thinking that a lot of folks face access barriers, um, in order to register for the vaccine on their own. So we want to be able to get folks set up with those appointments and then, of course, direct them to any other pop-up opportunities as well. We've been able to assist with two-on-one with the Rent and Utility Assistance Program in order to help screen folks, um, through the phone with the new rollout. I know Katie will be digging in a little bit into the new e-rap program, but we have the mcrenthelp.com. Um, but for especially looking at last year's program in October, November and December, um, two-on-one was a critical resource and continues to be a critical resource in order for folks to get, um, screened for rent and utility assistance. And then we do continue to promote broadband. We know that internet is essential and internet can also be really expensive. And so we are partnered with United Ways of California in order to get folks, um, directed to low-cost internet providers as well. Can we please go to the next slide? And then, yes, of course, disaster relief. We work very closely with the Office of Emergency Services and we have throughout the COVID-19 pandemic. But you'll see a couple of quick, um, numbers on this slide in relation to the wildfires. And we were able to provide critical information for folks when they were calling in, especially thinking about sheltering. Um, if they needed to evacuate, what the evacuation orders were. Um, so when folks didn't know where to call, they were able to call into two-on-one and we could get them directed to whatever information they were looking for, whether that was if they needed to leave their home and if they were leaving their home, what resources were available to them as well. Next slide, please. And here you'll see some quick data, um, for 2020 for Monterey County. And I want to, on the left side, I want to show, looking at those percentages, just some of that increase that Katie was able to show on the slide, um, between the years. So in Monterey County, we had nineteen thousand, two hundred and sixty-eight phone calls, um, four hundred and ninety-five two-way texts. And then you'll see a huge jump in our web searches. Um, and then on the right-hand side, you'll see what were folks asking about, what were those needs that they were contacting us for? And so you'll see the main category of fifty-eight percent was housing utilities, food and transportation. But then, of course, um, income and employment, mental health and substance abuse, um, legal consumer and public safety. Then we have healthcare and then, of course, individual family and community support. And so now I'd like to dig a little bit into the numbers specific to Pacific Grove and what folks were reaching out to two-on-one about. Um, and so you'll see that the same percent or different percentages, but the same categories on the right-hand side. Um, but I wanted to be able to drill down into what were the top needs within these categories. I know that when we see sixty-two percent of housing utilities, food and transportation, we might be asking ourselves, well, what does that mean? That's kind of broad. And so in order to dig into those, um, I just wanted to share the top needs within those categories. So for housing utilities, food and transportation, the top need within that category was rent payment assistance, followed by food pantries and then followed by electric service payment assistance. For income and employment, the top expressed need was VITA tax preparation information. Then for mental health and substance use, we had general counseling services, which is a top need within that category. Legal consumer and public safety, we have general legal aid as the top need within that category. Healthcare, um, the top need was communicable disease control for COVID-19. So folks reaching out in relation to COVID. And then for individual family and community support, we have area agencies on aging. And so as we can see, um, residents of Pacific Grove were contacting two-on-one in 2020 in order to get connected to critical services, of course, related to the COVID-19 pandemic, but also a variety of resources. And it has been, um, my pleasure in order to serve the residents of Monterey County, but especially thinking, um, residents of Pacific Grove as they've needed, um, different resources that we've been able to be a resource when maybe they're not sure where to turn. They know that they can dial two-on-one.
Thank you, Kalissa. And then just moving on to how we sustain two-on-one and how you can help, uh, be part of that, uh, broad-based funding. So we have, uh, really since our inception in two thousand nine, um, been able to, uh, support two-on-one through public and private, uh, support. Uh, the county of Monterey, both the, uh, behavioral health department as well as the social services department were, um, initial and continued funders, um, local foundations. Um, and you'll see here the list of our current supporters. And, um, we about ten years ago started, um, reaching out to cities to ask all of the cities in the county to participate. So, um, this part, tonight is part of our, um, education and outreach with Pacific Grove. We would love you to join this, this group of cities who have helped, um, invest and sustain in, um, keeping two-on-one available to our community. I think of, of this broad-based support as being part of keeping our infrastructure in place for those day-to-day calls that we know are going to continue, whether it's the, the, the woman, um, in a domestic violent situation that needs to know immediately where to go for help. Um, the, the person in the middle of the night that has, um, perhaps a suicidal thought and doesn't know where to go and doesn't have the hotline number, we can do a warm transfer for that person. Or the person that's lost their job and needs some direction on, um, um, finding new employment. So those are what I think of as kind of our, our core basic functions. And what I'd like to talk to you next about is, you know, again, some of these, um, special initiatives like Kalissa mentioned. The biggest one this year, um, really having to do with the emergency rental assistance program. And I know there was a, uh, there's been a, quite a bit of interest in this. And I just wanted to take this opportunity to share with you how we've leveraged two-on-one. People already call us for help. In fact, even back in two thousand nine, the top need was related to housing. We know that it's expensive to live here and that people need, um, support, um, uh, for stable housing in a variety of ways. But of course, the pa, the pandemic has compounded that. Um, so what we are doing currently is using two-on-one as a, as a front door to help, um, enroll and refer people to, uh, rental assistance currently. And the, the goal of that is to distribute, um, state and federal funds, which have been set aside for, um, eviction prevention and really to help people, um, stay in their homes. Uh, we, we're modeling this program on one that we did, um, last fall through CARES Act funding, um, funded by the county. And I wanted to share with you, this is just a snapshot of the, the last program. And you'll see how two-on-one as a platform and the partners that we're working with are able to distribute, um, rental support throughout the county. And so, um, in that case, it was one point two five million dollars of rent and utility assistance. And you'll see here, we can, um, uh, identify within Pacific Grove, we were able to help eight residents here, um, in the amount of six thousand dollars pay their rent back last fall. And, um, similarly, we were able to, um, help folks with their utility bills. And you'll see again, Pacific Grove is, um, luckily your residents, some of them have, um, been able to benefit from that program, which we, at this point now, are reflecting on as, as a pilot because we are going, um, and we're in the middle of a much larger program. And this is, um, uh, just a little flow diagram of the process, um, for people to access the current emergency rental and utility assistance program. So as we have mentioned, people can call two-on-one 24/7 and make an application. And so the call specialist will screen them for eligibility, actually take their information and make a referral to one of our thirteen agency partners who are helping to actually pay out, uh, benefits and collect documents. Um, people can also apply directly online through our website, mcrenthelp.com. And so people can fill out that application directly. It's also integrated into our system and people would be then choosing one of the referral partners that, um, that is, uh, serving their demographic. Um, and then we have this central software platform, which then again, um, assigns people to one of our participating agencies. And, um, in the case of rent assistance, what's important to know is that, um, the landlords need to participate in, 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 and they need to agree to, uh, really for, to forgive twenty percent of what's due. And if you think about somebody that has really fallen behind in their rent, some of the rental arrears have, have grown quite a lot. And what we found is many landlords are, are definitely willing to take that discounted rental payment and call it, call it even, if you will. Um, and that is how the, the system was set up by the state of California. But landlords that, that agree to participate can be eligible for up to eighty percent of that back rent. And, um, landlords that don't, um, we are actually able to pay twenty-five percent of what's owed. And again, that the goal is for us to help people dig out of what can be crushing debt that's accrued through this COVID-19 crisis and the, and the economic impacts, um, of it. And so, uh, I wanted to just, you know, take a moment to show you the, the process and how it uses two-on-one as one sort of user-friendly point of entry. Um, we are currently, um, now nearly two months, maybe six weeks into the program. And, um, we've received over two thousand applications. So, uh, our thirteen partners are working very hard to process those, but there is a bit of a backlog. But, um, the good news is that, um, we, uh, we know people have, have, uh, applied. We know that we've got a, a good start at those applications and, um, that we have a really strong set of partners, both, um, some municipalities as well as, um, community-based organizations and even our community colleges are participating for people who may be enrolled at MPC or Hartnell College and might be eligible. Um, and, uh, again, the eligibility, um, And again, the eligibility is based on income level. So people need to be low-income and they need to be affected by COVID-19, whether it's loss of wages, illness, having to care for others or family members. And so there's such a wide range of impacts of COVID-19 that we know that this funding can be made available to, to nearly anyone in that low-income bracket who is, who is suffering financially. And so that is the end of our prepared presentation, and I'm happy to answer any questions.
Thank you. Again, do we have any council comments or questions? Councilmember Padori.
Thank you, Katie and Calissa, for the presentation. Appreciate it really. But I would say enlightening to me, the number of calls that are going in in particular. I had a question on the eRap program. Does it have like an end date? I mean, is it, does this go on forever?
It, it is, currently it's scheduled through the end of December of 2021.
Okay.
And, and it's really front-loaded to take care of, of debt that people have incurred up until this month, or actually through, through March, so really the first year of the pandemic. And so we, we can pay up to nine months of back rent for people. And, and so that, that's where the largest portion of assistance comes into play. We can also pay twenty-five percent of current rent up to three months. And so thinking about trying to bridge that gap between now and the end of 2021 is really the focal point for that funding.
Okay, got it. And from what I know, at least from what I've read rather, the, the, the two, the 211 program does assist folks who want to register for vaccinations, right? Those who can't access the computers, et cetera?
Yes, and I'll, I'll let Calissa speak to that because we've worked really hard on that one as well.
Yeah, so we are able to register folks. It is available seven days a week, 8:00 AM to 8:00 PM. They just call in and we'll follow, they'll dial 211, follow the phone queue, and they'll be connected with a call center specialist that will then speak with them in relation to their needs. So for example, if they're located in Pacific Grove, trying to find a vaccine opportunity that fits their schedule and also fits where they're located and that they're comfortable with. And then we'll be able to step them through that process of being able to register. And when I say step them through, they will be able to register the individual on the phone and then give them the date and time of that appointment. So we're able to provide that service because we know there's a lot of folks that, due to a variety of reasons, may not be able to register themselves.
Right, right. So you're on top of it. Thank you. Fantastic. That's a great thing to hear. Appreciate the presentation again.
Councilmember McAdams.
Thank you, Mayor, and thank you ladies for being here. You know, 211, especially the efficiency of having one place to call residents that have come to me in the past for assistance. It's a very frustrating process if they're having to leave messages or calling the wrong organization to help them. So I mean, having 211 available to our communities is really an outstanding service. And then with regards to, you know, meeting that need of being able to do the over-the-phone vaccine appointments. I mean, that is so, such a need, especially, you know, in our community, we have a lot of seniors who aren't computer savvy, or at one point, I think the vaccine registration, you could only use Google and, you know, and, and quite frankly, not everyone has an email address.
Right.
So, you know, that was really instrumental in getting a lot of our community vaccinated. So thank you for the data, specifically to our city, especially as we continue to discuss affordable housing and how to better support our residents. But something that, you know, really resonates with, with me is just a lot of people need basic needs, right? They need food, they need shelter, and we live in one of the richest areas in the state of California. And so, you know, that's something to really think about. If we do have community members that are inspired, how can they help support United Way?
Oh, thank you. Great question. We do have volunteer opportunities throughout the year so people can look on our website and whether it's volunteering with our Stuff the Bus Backpack Drive, helping us, actually, we're excited to get geared up for the Concorde de La Gonce. United Way has a special role in that. And really, I think beyond volunteering, of course, people can donate to United Way. But I also think, you know, when we're talking right now about the, some of the really critical issues, the housing, making sure people have access, I think, you know, there's really a lot of room for advocacy and really, you know, stepping up and, and helping to get the message across. Certainly the helping to educate others about the importance of being vaccinated, about the importance of showing up at, at, you know, places like city council meetings to make sure, you know, community voice is being heard. Those are, those are all different ways that people can help carry forward our mission. And we also have a monthly newsletter, so there's a place on our website you can sign up. And we'd love to make sure people are hearing what we're up to. Thank you.
Thank you.
Councilmember Kullaby.
Thank you, Mayor, and thank you for the presentation. I, I found it very useful. I, I have a couple of questions. The first one is, has Pacific Grove ever been a contributing member, as it were?
No, not yet.
Not yet. Thank you. The, you know, I think we should do everything we can to promote, you could call it advertise the 211 program or 211 program. You know, we have a lot of outreach that we're involved in just, you know, for our own programs, and we should certainly rule in this program with that. And I wanted to know also, is, do you coordinate directly with the local utilities and inform people who might be calling about the programs that they offer? Is there this kind of cross-pollination going on between what the utilities offer? And can you put them in contact? Is that, is that working like that?
Well, we do have a specific program with Cal-Am Water that we've had for about three years, and they've, they've actually funded us to do basically ratepayer hardship payments for people that are having difficulty with their bill. So that's one that we've worked very closely with. And then beyond that, we're just starting in the current program to really make payments with, with all the utilities for eligible households for this Emergency Rent Assistance Program. But I'm sure, and, and I'm sorry, there's one other area that statewide, 211 is working with PG&E very closely to do notifications when there have to be shutdown, planned shutdowns, which is increasing with the wildfire mitigation. So more and more, we're seeing that 211s can be used to make sure that people, for example, who are dependent on, on electrical supply for medical conditions and so forth, that we were able to do a real personal outreach. So that's something that's just starting to really grow within our network.
Well, thank you for that. I, I would certainly look forward to the, you know, local utilities jumping in and contributing to this program as well. And, and thank you for all the data, once again.
I want to add my thanks for the presentation, for being here tonight and for all the wonderful support that United Way provides to the most vulnerable parts of our community. I had one question. The, the statistic on Pacific Grove, the three oh five call, is that calls, number of phone calls to 211 from Pacific Grove, or the number of people?
That is a number of calls, so there may be people that call more than once, if that's, if that's what you're getting at. And, and we actually do track globally, repeat callers. So I find that's actually a good sign of our service if people call back. So sometimes we do have people who use 211 regularly, but within that, that twelve-month period, three hundred and five of those calls identified themselves as calling from Pacific Grove. And, and it, the, we always ask the location first because we've been tracking resources as close to them as possible.
Well, certainly appreciate everything that you're doing. And you're the, I think 211 is the, gotta be the major, major conduit for community services that, that the county ultimately provides. But how do, how do people know about what the county is providing? Because Pacific Grove's not providing those social services that are, that are so valuable for folks. So thank you so much. It looks like, well, we're gonna have to have a discussion during budget about contributing to, to 211. Well, without any further, without any further questions or comments, thank you so much for being here again.
Thank you very much. We really appreciate the opportunity and, and thanks for your leadership as well.
Thank you.
All right, moving on to council and staff announcements, we did not have a closed session tonight, so I'll just turn to our city manager. We have staff announcements.
Yes, thank you, Mayor. We have two this evening that I'd like to call upon. First, Ms. Tori Hannah, followed by Mr. Dan Go. Ms. Hannah, please.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor, councils, council and member of the public. Tonight, I would like to introduce Mary Legasca. Mary is our new Deputy Director of Finance. She has thirteen years of public accounting experience, with her most recent experience being with the city of Salinas, where she has served as interim Assistant Finance Director, Accounting Manager, and a Senior Accountant. Mary is a licensed CPA. She has a Bachelor's of Science degree in Business Economics and also a Master's in Accounting and Finance. And we are very fortunate to feel that we, that she will be joining our team. With that, Barry, do you have a couple of things that you'd like to add?
Thank you, Tori. Good evening, Mayor and members of the City Council. My name is Mary Legasca, and I am very excited to join the city of Pacific Grove. And being part of this team will, I believe, will allow me to further enhance my skills and allow me to get more exposure in other areas of government accounting. So thank you, Tori.
Thank you, Mr. Go, please.
Yeah, thank you, Mayor, members of City Council, City Manager Harvey. I'd just like to really quick announce that we've been getting through the Recreation Department a lot of inquiries about special events, as I'm sure the City Council has too, and how the special events will look coming into the next fiscal year. We are planning on moving forward with all of the events in some form or fashion as they meet the CDC guidelines. I'd like to let the City Council know that I will be providing an update to the calendar at the next City Council meeting along with the potential addition of two new events for next fiscal year. I just wanted to provide that to the City Council, that update. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Go. Back to you, Mr. Mayor.
All right, thanks. Any council member announcements? Councilmember McAdams.
Thank you, Mayor. This week, I am attending the virtual JPIA Governance Leadership Academy, learning about risk management, how to be an effective council member, and how to engage and better support our residents. I'm really enjoying this experience, working and collaborating with other elected officials in various cities in California. And then also, I thought I saw somewhere that First Friday will be coming back and kicking off the weekend of the Fourth of July. So a couple months away, but that's super exciting to see us gradually opening, opening back up. Thank you.
Councilmember Padori.
Thank you, Mayor. First of all, I would like to say happy Cinco de Mayo to everybody. And I would like to welcome Mary Legasca to, to the team. Welcome, Mary. I, I would also like to thank the PG Chamber of Commerce, as well as the event sponsors, Debbie Beck Real Estate Group, for organizing and coordinating the Laguna Seca Race the Truck Event. It was handled perfectly early from start to finish. I think I may have grabbed the pole position there for the next event. Separately, I, I've not pulled this report out, but item eight B is the Transportation Agency for Monterey County 2020 Annual Report. It actually does go into the details of how the water-initiated Measure X funds have been put to work by the agency and for Pacific Grove, and particularly recently funded projects in part by Measure X have included the pedestrian improvements behind the high school on Forest Lodge Road, as well as the Congress Avenue Road rehabilitation. So I encourage folks to take a look at that report and see how the tax dollars are actually going to work. Thank you.
And I'll close council comments with another welcome to Mary Legasca. Welcome to PG. Glad you're part of staff, our staff. And now we'll turn to general public comment. Do we have any, anyone wishing to speak?
Yes, Mr. Mayor. Tom Aikman, you have the floor.
Welcome.
Hi, thank you. And I, I was gonna talk about something, but I'm, just for a moment, I want to go back to that United Way presentation. That was very impressive, and I would urge my taxpayer dollar to be contributed to that cause because I think that was very good. Now, back to what I was gonna talk about. I think we sometimes get caught up in things and overlook what a wonderful place this is and how privileged we really are to be living here. Net then, I want to report on the harbor seal pupping that's going on on our beaches right now. The seals that live along Pacific Grove have had seventy-one successful births so far this year that we know of. That's a notable improvement over last year and the year before. There was one very pregnant seal in labor late this afternoon when we left, but most of the deliveries are over now. After just a few failures, the successful pupping started on March the thirty-first, peaked in the middle of May, and has been winding down. But to show, the nursing, the swimming lessons, and the other nurturing should continue for several more weeks. So if you haven't been on the rec trail near Hopkins Marine Station lately to see this, you still have a chance. It's a fascinating part of nature that you can see close up here, adorable creatures in their own natural setting. Kim and I have been up and down the California coast looking at harbor seals, and we haven't found nor heard of any place but Pacific Grove where you can see so many harbor seals so closely. It's a unique feature here. Lots of people know about it and do enjoy it. The Harbor Seals of Pacific Grove Facebook page has a following of more than twelve thousand people daily. It was recently an essay in a local paper that said that watching the baby seals in PG is a refreshing lesson in normalcy at a time when so many things around us are topsy-turvy. We absolutely agree with that, and we thank you.
Thank you.
Anthony Chiani, you have the floor.
Welcome. Thank you. Good evening. I want to bring back a thought that I believe I heard at an earlier council meeting, and that is that the agendas, as you go forward, should incorporate the latest issues that were not addressed at the earlier council meetings to be addressed first in the next council meters, meetings. The notion that an item does not get heard, is laid in the agenda, and then gets put off to the next agenda to be at the end of the next agenda is not logical, does not make sense, is not fair. So could you please address that and make sure that the order of these things is done in a reasonable, equitable way? Thank you.
Thank you.
Dixie Lane, you have the floor.
Welcome.
Thank you. Good evening, Mayor, council and staff. I'm here this evening because the monarchs are on my mind, and I have a few things I'd like to share with you and a question. and I have a few things I'd like to share with you and a question I hope you'll be able to answer. First, this year Butterfly Days is scheduled for October first through the third, and we are well on our way to planning a great weekend, keeping COVID product protocols in mind, of course. And this year, we have a few new events in the works. It's some very exciting stuff. And we are aware funding will be a bit problematic this year because of the economic impact COVID has had on our businesses and residents, but we are optimistic that those that can help will step up. We're also looking for volunteers to help us deliver this eighty-two-year-old event, but I'll get back to everybody on that later. So mark your calendars, October first, second, and third for Butterfly Days. I'm happy to report on another topic, that the number of volunteers that caretake the sanctuary has risen from four to five. Our little team is out there three or four days a week for somewhere between fifteen and twenty hours, and things are looking up, but we have a long way to go. Which takes me to my question. We have been anxiously awaiting a draft of the Sanctuary's Management Plan for the twenty-one, twenty-two season. It, and it was, if you remember, during the twenty-nineteen walk-through, the community was promised there would be an opportunity for community input to future draft plans much earlier than has happened in the past. So that there was plenty of time to make any adjustments necessary based on the community's input. I recently saw an outline of the Sanctuary's Management Plan process, and nowhere was there mention of any community outreach meetings. I trust this is just a scheduling oversight, and the community will be brought into the process and plenty of time to allow input. I really hope I'm right. After all, this is May, and time is getting short now. Last year, we weren't even able to start our work in the sanctuary until September, and the work was, wasn't, and couldn't be completed before October first. So hopefully, we'll hear something about the plan soon. So, thank you very much.
And thank you, and please contact the BNRC using their webpage about public feedback. Do we have anyone else wishing to speak?
We do, Your Honor. Wendy Giles, you have the floor.
Welcome.
Good evening, Mayor and City Council. Just a brief update about the crosswalk situation around the schools in Pacific Grove. From the last meeting till now, a number of parents have volunteered with Doctor, with Barbara Martinez and School Board Trustee Carolyn Swanson, Chief Madalone, and Officer Amanda Kane. And we're, we seem to be sorting it out somewhat, but I, I'd just like to make sure that everyone that's listening in, when you're driving by the schools, the kids are on all different types of schedules, coming in and out of campuses. And please be really aware, we're really relying on all the local drivers to help the crosswalk folks and the kids that are crossing the streets to get across safely. There have been a number of near misses at the corner of Sunset by the football stadium, and I would just really encourage everyone to please proceed very slowly in those areas. And again, I'm still very disappointed about the unceremonious letting go of Michael Logan. What a community asset to that particular corner. It is lots of cars and lots of different types of vehicles, trucks, and I hope that everyone will please be very careful out there. Thank you.
Thank you, and that's a great reminder. Drive safe around all our schools. Do we have anyone else?
Yes, we do, Your Honor. Norma, you have the floor.
Welcome.
Thank you. Yes, I, I have a lot of questions, actually, you know, we, but I know you can't answer them. The, everyone got a bill, well, not a bill, but a statement saying that our Monterey One Water was gonna go up, and it's, it's on a schedule to go up over the next five years. And the first year, it increases by forty-seven percent. And then by the end of that five years, it will go up to a hundred, it's increasing by a hundred and twenty-two percent total for those five years. To me, this is just way too much. And, you know, I'm new to Pacific Grove fairly. I moved here full-time in two thousand and nineteen. So I've been trying to figure out all the water situation here on the peninsula, and it's, it's very complicated. And, you know, we, we, we have this pure water Monterey that's recycling, using advanced technology and recycling the water. And so that's getting, decreasing our water demand from the Carmel River and things, but I just, this rate increase just seems exorbitant when you consider that for the last three years, we've only had a ten percent increase on our Monterey One Water bill. So I, I just don't understand why that first jump is forty-seven percent, and then the subsequent increases are, you know, a lot higher too, because you've got the, the jump in, increase on the front end. If it was going for, going towards purchasing Cal-Am out of the water supply system, buying them out, I could see the big jump, but I don't think it is. I don't know what happened with Measure J. I'm trying to research that and see what's going on with that, but it, it just seems like this is just a never-ending problem. Also, it seems like that, you know, you have pure water Monterey provide, recycling this water, and then they're selling, which we're paying for by the, by through Monterey One Water, and then it's getting priced to Cal-Am. And so we're, it seems like they're double dipping. We're paying both of them. We're paying for water to be recycled, and then they're sending that over to Cal-Am. They're purchasing it from their recycling efforts. And then we're getting increased rates with Cal-Am too. So it's just an ever-ending process here. It's a circle. It's, I, I don't know. I don't, I'm not understanding all of it.
And Norma, thank you for your, your comments. I suggest it is a complex water. I, I think it's the most complex subject on the peninsula. If you'll write us, we can probably steer you in the right direction, getting more information. Thanks for speaking up. Do we have anyone else?
I see no other hands raised, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, we'll close public comment, and we're on to the consent agenda. Any council members wishing to pull a consent agenda item? Seeing none? Do we have any member of the public wishing to pull a consent agenda item?
I see no hands raised, Mr. Mayor.
Maybe we have a vote, please.
Would you like?
You better have a motion first, right?
Is that Councilmember Coletti, second?
I think Councilmember Tomlinson beat me to it.
Okay, thank you. All right, I'll have a vote. Councilmember Tomlinson?
Aye.
Councilmember Smith?
Aye.
Councilmember Pudori?
Aye.
Councilmember McAdams?
Aye.
Councilmember Coletti?
Aye.
Councilmember, I'm sorry, Mayor Pete?
Aye.
Vote. Motion carries six zero one. Councilmember Emilio absent.
Thank you. I'll quickly summarize what we've just done. We've approved council minutes from April seventh and April twenty-one. We've held a second reading of an ordinance to amend the Municipal Code two point oh four, adopted rules on ex parte contacts. We have, let's see. We've held a second reading of an ordinance to amend the budget for library funds. We have also amended the budget pertaining to the capital improvement plan. This is the current year's budget. And we've held a second reading and adopted, an ordinance adopting temporary outdoor dining rules. And we've received minutes from the Association of Monterey Bay Area Governments from March tenth, from Councilmember McAdams, Transportation Agency Monterey County Twenty Twenty Annual Report that Councilmember Pudori had mentioned earlier. And there were no new local emergency actions. So there was no, we, but we received the report, and we've directed boards, committees, commissions, and city staff to provide recommendations on post-pandemic meeting frequency no later than January twenty eighth. And that concludes our consent agenda. Councilmember Tomlinson.
I'm sorry, Mayor. I think you misspoke. You said January, but June.
Did I say June twenty eighth? Yes, and end of, end of next month.
Right, okay, thanks.
Thank you, and I, I think we glossed over out of order, but we are accepting applications for Diversity Equity and Inclusion Committee. And we're asking those individuals that are interested in serving on that committee to please send your applications to our city clerk, Sandra Kendell, by the end of this month. All right, moving on now, we're on to item eleven A, Resolution Adopting the Master Fee Schedule for the next fiscal year. Ms. Fratton, welcome.
Thank you. Honorable Mayor, council members, members of the public. Staff has prepared master fee schedule for fiscal year two thousand and twenty-one, ending June thirtieth, two thousand and twenty-two. The recommendation in this report is to adjust the current fee schedule where applicable by two percent, which is the Consumer Price Index for period ending December thirty-first, two thousand and twenty. The attached master fee schedule structure is, the attached master fee schedule, the structure is to provide the current fiscal year fees in the first column, and the proposed fees are in the second column. There are certain police department fines that have been adjusted on a local comparison. All other of those fees have resulted in the application of the CPI. And the sewer rate study also are identified in the schedule. In addition to the CPI adjustment, staff has proposed changes to fees based on the city's cost recovery policy, which is policy number four zero zero dash four. And council's discretion to recover a hundred percent of cost associated with providing services to the general public. There are a few specific exceptions. Those are related to state and federal fees. And I'm sorry, my mouse is having troubles jumping around. Here we go. Let's see, so we have market-based fees or other fees. Those are not subject to the CPI. They are based on land facility usages and fines and similar types of items that are market-based fees. And with that, I'm available to answer any questions you may have.
Thank you. Do we have any public comment on this item?
I see no hands raised, Mr. Mayor. Oh, I see one hand raised. One moment. Anthony Chiani, you have the floor.
Welcome.
I just want to confirm what I heard, and that is that developer fees for cost recovery will be a hundred percent. And I assume what occurs is that developers for large-scale projects will be submitting a deposit that will be drowned down upon and accounted for in some sort of an audit. And when that gets down to some level, then the city auditor will ask for an additional deposit so that the city does not end up in a project bella like it did several years ago. Thank you.
Thank you.
I see no other hands raised, Mr. Mayor.
Do we have any council comments, discussion on this item? Councilmember Tomlinson.
Yes, Mayor, I just have a question. We got an email from a member of the community and I'm asking about if they're on the water waiting list, having to pay the fee to extend the permit applications, or if they already have, you know, have approved permits, but they're just waiting on the water waiting list, having to pay that each year. Is that something that we are able to waive? Or I, I see in some of the places on this fee schedule, it says that waive will be considered to be waived. So what are the circumstances in which that would apply?
Mr. Harvey, I think that was headed in your direction.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and I'm going to, in anticipation, I want to thank Laurel Halloran, who oversees the water effort in the Community Development Department, and she's prepared the following response, which I'm gonna read to you. There are currently ten properties on the water waitlist that do not have a water meter. Properties are allowed to be on the water waitlist if they get ARB approval for an architectural permit with a two-year expiration date to apply for a building permit. You cannot apply for a building permit without a water meter. City allows for, for two one-year extensions with the fees waived if the property is on the water waitlist. City does not remove applicants from the water waitlist even if the architectural permits expire. I know that Ms. O'Halloran, I think, is on this meeting if there's additional questions, but I, I don't know if that answers your, your question, Councilmember Tomlinson, or not.
Well, I guess I just, I mean, I can kind of dream up the reason why maybe for two years that we would offer the extension, but the community members, you know, go through the, the ARB, they get an approval of their design, but then they can't get a building permit because they don't have a meter, so then they wait. And that's an expensive process, and so it would seem to me that waiving that extent, you know, indefinitely almost would make sense. Now, I'm sure maybe some of the answer from the building department person would be that in ten years from now, we may want to review the ARB of what was approved, but so I'm just having a hard time for, for the community, I feel for the community member, I guess, the members who are going through this process of, of where we have this weird thing of a water waiting list and in order, and so I would be a proponent of waiving that fee, because it just doesn't seem fair to keep collecting it. So that's just my comment, Mayor. I mean, I don't, I don't think there's an answer to my question.
Well, I, there's, there is no fee, but as, as we just heard, there is no fee for, once you're on the water waitlist, there is no fee to stay on the water waitlist.
Right, but there is a fee for the permits to stay. Right. But there is a fee for the permits to stay active.
That, that's correct.
Okay.
So, um, if you're suggesting that we waive fees and keep uh, architectural permits alive on, that's a item for discussion. If you wanted to take it up now.
I, I am happy to discuss it. I don't, I'd like to know what my, my other colleagues feel, but I think that you know, I would be okay with waiving that fee and keeping those permits alive if the reason why someone's not going forward and building is purely to do with this meter moratorium and the water waiting list. If they're just waiting because because, 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 then that's a different, you know, reason, but this seems like something that they cannot solve. Therefore, making folks pay is just sort of a double jeopardy. So.
Councilmember Coletti.
Well, I, I certainly agree. It is kind of creating a limbo uh, situation, but I do, I think the way it works is you go get your ARB permit. You pay for that. That's good for a year. Then the city allows you to extend that for two additional years. The city currently waives those two additional years. Normally you would have to pay the city to keep those active for those two additional years. My understanding is if you're on the water waitlist and then this limbo condition, that is waived. So I think what you're proposing is that once that three-year period's up, and again, the last two years have been waived, that we would waive the reapplication fee uh, for a new permit, basically. And um, you know, I spoke, I, I kind of dipped my toe in the pool on this one and uh, I was told by staff that there are reasons why you cannot let a permit just go on indefinitely. Rules, laws change, and you just can't ignore those by keeping a permit active. But then just can't come back into the process and be reevaluated. But you know, really, that's a city attorney question, so I really am not an expert on it. But that was the explanation given to me. So I'm just providing information. I'm not, I'm not a saying one way or the other.
I, I heard that from Anastasia as well, but I, I think that we can make a like, I would be comfortable making the decision that if the permit was given and then five years later, we would still allow, we would still allow that permit to be valid.
Councilmember Pedori and then our city attorney, I'm sure, looks like wants to jump in or our city attorney first?
I would rather go first if I might. Uh, I want to point out that this is an agenda item that discusses fees and has you setting fees. A discussion as to whether or not a permit should expire or be extended is really beyond the scope of the fee question. If you want to extend the life of a permit, then that should be a separate item on the agenda and is not fair game for discussion tonight. We haven't given notice to the public. They were talking about the life expectancy of a permit, whether it will be extended or, or, or not.
Councilmember Pedori.
Uh, I was kind of praising my answer in the same way that um, the city lawyer was framing, which is it appears that there's a lot of ifs and but conditions here. Uh, and probably this may be just be a topic on an item itself where we can give direction to maybe the city manager to say what is exactly happening here and probably suggest if there is an alternative that can be found, whether it's through a fee waiver or otherwise.
Councilmember McAdams.
Thank you, Mayor. I'm happy to uh, make a motion.
Um, I have
I move to approve. Okay.
Could you hold, hold your thought? I've, I've got it. I've got a few things. I, I, my thought is, um, yeah, this is, this is a larger discussion, uh, extension of permits and and if a council member would like to bring this back as a, as a separate topic and just for your information, um, I've been contacted by staff to talk about the way exactly this problem. The, uh, the water waitlist and Councilmember Tomlinson, I'd be happy to include you in this conversation. That's
Sounds great. Thank you, Mayor.
All right. Um, we've got a couple of items. Uh, let's see. Uh, one is, it looks like we're going to be issuing, yeah, if we do issue more water promissory notes, I think there should be a fee for that. We have a water entitlements, uh, rights application processing fee of $442. I don't think that includes a processing fee for a promissory note. So I recommend that we add that that fee. Um, and just an, an observation on the, on the price of water. We have the base price of entitlement water is in the master fee schedule, but not the discount which is by uh, council resolution. And they're out of phase by six months. So you have the base fee one place and then you have a discount in another place and the discount currently expires mid fiscal year. So it's just an observation. Um, when we, when we talk about, uh, extend, whether we want to extend the, the water entitlements discount fee past December 31st, uh, we will, uh, get those two things in sync and put them both in the uh, this master fee schedule. Um, on a editorial note, we have a, a fee for handicapped parking. Handicapped is a pejorative. Please, please remove that, replace that. Our city attorney, I'm sure, would be happy to suggest a replacement fee. And if uh, if staff would like to take this term handicap parking out of our municipal code, I would certainly welcome an item uh, brought before council to uh, replace that term. And last, a small matter, we have a banner display request form online and it is not consistent with the master fee uh, banner display. I think we just need to correct the banner display request form. Fine, it's a finance form. It's an old form. It's, it's not even, you cannot fill it out online. Um, so that whole form needs updating. It refers to a council policy that doesn't exist. So let's get it consistent with the master fee schedule. So that's all I had.
Thank you, Mayor.
Councilmember McAdams. I think we're ready for a motion.
Great. Thank you, Mayor, and thank you, Councilmember Tomlinson, for, for bringing up the, you know, the, the water waitlist and the water entitlements, and especially with uh, Mayor Peak's comments, you know, we, we do need a larger discussion. So um, with that, I move that we approve a resolution adopting the master fee schedule for fiscal year 2021-22, including the 2% Consumer Price Index adjustment and the changes that Mayor Peak provided.
Do we have a second?
A second?
Any discussion on the motion? May we have a vote, please?
Yes, sir. Mayor Peak?
Side.
Councilmembers Coletti?
Aye.
McAdams?
Aye.
Pedori?
Aye.
Smith?
Aye.
And Tomlinson?
Aye.
Motion carries 601. Councilmember Emilio absent.
Well, now here, item 11B Hospitality Improvement District Program for the next fiscal year. Ms. Fratton.
Thank you, Mayor, council members, members of the public. Public hearing being held tonight is to approve the Hospitality Industry District Program for the upcoming fiscal year 2020, 2000, um, excuse me, 2021 to 2022. The HID was established in 2007 when the city established the Improvement District and appointed an advisory board. The HID assessment currently is $2 per night for, for, for full service lodging establishments and a dollar per night for all others. Currently, the city has only um, $1 per night rooms. We do not currently have full service lodging establishments. So the assessment revenues are exclusively used for the support and benefit of the hospitality economy of Pacific Grove. As stated in Resolution 07 dash 044, which formed the Hospitality Industry District, the Chamber of Commerce on behalf of the district has prepared the following reports. Copies of these reports are included in your agenda packet. They are the annual report of the district's revenues and expenditures for the fiscal year 2019-20. Also, the proposed budget for the fiscal year 2020 122 and the request of a levy assessment for 2021-22. All terms of the resolutions have been met. And this green has the proposed expenditures for this upcoming fiscal year. The proposed budget is totaling $2,000, $10,000. Approving the resolution and the annual staff recommends adopting the resolution to approve the annual report, levy the annual assessment, approve the program for this upcoming fiscal year, appoint the HID advisory board and authorize the city manager to execute an agreement with the Pacific Grove Chamber of Commerce to administer the HID budget. And I'm happy to answer any questions you may have.
Thank you. Do we have any members of the public wishing to comment?
I see no hands raised, Mr. Mayor.
Do you have any council comments, discussion? And Lori, if you could, um, stop sharing your screen for a moment. Thank you.
Oh, my mouse is running amok. There we go.
Okay, um, if we don't have council discussion, may we have a motion, please?
I see some hands raised, Councilmember Coletti and McAdams, Mr. Mayor.
Yeah, I can't. Okay, Councilmember Coletti, I can't see everybody's.
I was just ready to make a motion, as all your honor.
Please.
Okay. I move to adopt the attached resolution to approve the annual report, levy the annual assessment, approve the program for fiscal year 2021-22, appoint the HID advisory board and authorize the city manager to execute an agreement with the Pacific Grove Chamber of Commerce to administer the HID.
Do we have a second? I'll second that. Do we have a vote?
Yes, sir. Mayor Peak?
Aye.
Councilmembers Tomlinson?
Aye.
Smith?
Aye.
Pedori?
Aye.
McAdams?
Aye.
Coletti?
Aye.
Motion carries 601. Councilmember Emilio absent.
Thank you. Moving on to item C, Downtown Business Improvement District for our next fiscal year, 2021-22. Ms. Fratton.
Thank you, Mayor. City council members, members of the public. Uh, the public hearing being held tonight is to approve the Business Improvement District Program for the upcoming fiscal year 2021-2022. Well, okay. I'm trying to get the screen up.
Yeah.
All right. City council approved a resolution setting tonight's public hearing to consider the levy of the Business Improvement District for the fiscal year 2021-22 at their last council meeting of April 21st. Uh, staff has received no protest to the position regard. Staff has received no protest petitions regarding the levying of this assessment. All the businesses located in the Business Improvement District are assessed the amount equal to 35% of their business license tax. The assessment is collected together with the business license tax payment in July for each assessment year. The Chamber of Commerce has prepared several district annual reports and they are included in your packet. These reports are the results of the election of the board members. Detailed revenues and expenditures for fiscal year 2020-21. The proposed budget for 2021-22. The chamber is requesting the levy of the assessment for fiscal year 2021-22. There are no changes to the bid boundaries this year. The terms of the city council resolution 07 dash 042 that outlines the requirements for establishing the district have been met.
Do we have, thank you. Do we have any public comment?
Uh, yes, Your Honor. Moammar, you have the floor.
Welcome.
Good evening, Mayor, members of the council. First and foremost, thank you for your service. I'd like to share with you and the public that the BID was formed 20 years ago and the HID was formed 14 years ago by your Chamber of Commerce. You know, I'm happy to report that during all these years since it was formed and to the best of my knowledge, we haven't had a single business protest or object to the assessment. Over the years, we've had as many as 360 businesses in the BID and 23 in the HID. We're down to 300 in the BID and the same number remains 23 in the HID. What I think is amazing is you haven't had a single person in 20 years object or voice any opposition to this. This is a compliment to the leadership of the two advisory board members that work diligently to ensure a great return of investment for their members. Finally, I would like to thank Ms. Lori Fratton. I will share with the council and staff and the public that she was with us this morning when we met at 8:15 in the morning when the BID met and she is still here at around 8 o'clock in the evening. We couldn't We couldn't do this without her and we're really grateful for all her services. With that, I just wanted to express my appreciation to the council and staff for supporting both programs. Have a nice evening.
Thank you.
I see no other hands raised, Your Honor.
Councilmember McAdams.
Thank you, Mayor. I just wanted to thank Ms. Frati and the Chamber of Commerce as well as the members of the bid. It looks as though we have some new faces serving, so thank you for your service and as well as the Hospitality Improvement District, so that's all. Thank you.
Councilmember Paduri.
I'm ready to make a motion.
Please.
I move. I'm just checking if I'm on mute. Okay. I move that we adopt a resolution to approve the annual report, levy the annual assessment, approve the recommended fiscal year twenty-one, twenty twenty-one twenty-two program, appoint the BID Advisory Board for fiscal year twenty twenty-one twenty-two and authorize the city manager to execute an agreement allowing the PG Chamber of Commerce to administer the BID budget.
Second.
May we have a vote, please?
Councilmembers Tomlinson.
Aye.
Smith.
Aye.
Paduri.
Aye.
McAdams.
Aye.
And Coletti.
Aye.
Mayor Peak.
Aye.
Motion carries six zero one, Councilmember Emilio absent.
I meant to add, actually, for those that are hearing about the bid and the HID for the first time, these are our businesses, our local businesses that vote to tax themselves to foster and improve the local economy. So I thank them and the Chamber of Commerce for administering these, both these programs. Director Go, we'll move on to the next item D, Utility Easement Electric Vehicle Ordinance.
Very good. Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Mayor, members of the city council. I have a very brief presentation I will share. Very good. So tonight I'm here to present to you a utility easement for PG&E that will need to be administered for our charging station infrastructure that we will be installing or in the process of installing. So really quick, the project scope is to install four charging stations, which will have the capabilities of charging eight electrical vehicles that will be within the Fandango's parking lot. So why does PG&E need the easement? So we can install the equipment, the PG&E equipment to charge the stations with power and also provides them with the opportunity to service and maintain the installed equipment, not the charging stations, but the PG&E infrastructure that needs to be installed to power the charging stations. So a very, this, I have a presentation because the visuals speak a thousand words on this. The purple represents where the charging stations will be installed within the Fandango's parking lot. The yellow represents the parking lot. This map represents the easement that we will need to grant. So there's a current easement at the bottom of the screen, as you can see, and we will be granting with this approval tonight and this ordinance, a new easement adjacent to Seventeenth Street. Most of it will be underground, but we will need to have PG&E install a new pad that will house basically a panel that will then charge and provide the electricity to the charging stations. This map speaks a thousand words. I can give you all the written descriptions, but without seeing this map, it would be hard to understand. So tonight I'm asking the city council to introduce and hold a first reading of an ordinance granting a utility easement to Pacific Gas and Electric Company and direct the city clerk to publish a summary of the measure and as approved by the city attorney. That completes my presentation. Thank you.
Thank you. Do we have any public comment?
I do not see any hands raised for public comment, Mr. Mayor.
We have council comment, discussion. I'm going to kick off with a question, Mr. Go. Could you go to that photo of the parking lot and put your cursor where there's going to be two EV stations, right? And I, I, I think I missed, I missed the, this schematic. I wasn't really clear on where that was. So where, where would the, the actual device, I mean, they look like small gas, old fashioned gas pumps, right? There's two of them.
That's correct, Your Honor, and it's anticipated that they're going to be more closer to Seventeenth Street, though the design, tonight we're not asking to approve a design that was done prior to when Mr. Snyder brought that forth. We're currently in the process of developing that design and working with PG&E. So the power stations for the EV chargers will be within the location of the purple, but still the exact design and locations is yet to be determined and we're working through that right now with the contractor and PG&E simultaneously as we're moving forward with this potential easement. But they will be in this first row of parking closer to Seventeenth Street is from what we understand. So they'll be able to access from both sides of this parking lane.
So it, it will be in between the two, two rows of cars?
That's absolutely correct and protected by bollards.
Okay, yeah, we need that. Thank you.
We do.
Any, any council discussion?
I'll stop sharing now, Mr. Mayor.
Yeah, thank, thank you.
Move approval, Your Honor.
Please.
So move.
I second.
A vote, please.
Thank you. Mayor Peak.
Aye.
Councilmembers Coletti.
Aye.
McAdams.
Aye.
Paduri.
Aye.
Smith. And Tomlinson.
Aye.
Motion carries six zero one, Councilmember Emilio absent.
Well, now here, item eleven E, Ordinance Stat PGMC Chapter two point oh five to require the mayor sign contracts and other legal instruments. Councilmember Coletti.
Thank you, Mayor. I have some slides prepared. If Sandra could bring those up for us.
Well, we'll do. One quick second.
Great, thank you, Sandra. So this is a proposed ordinance to codify a city charter requirement that the mayor sign contracts and other legal instruments. Next slide, please. This is a little bit of recap about our city charter. The charter was, is rather, the expressed will of the people on how to organize Pacific Grove's government. It is our constitution. Pacific Grove first became a charter city in nineteen twenty-seven. And we have had, in addition to the nineteen twenty-seven charter, we've had adopted three other charters in nineteen fifty-five, sixty-nine, and seventy-four. And the last amendment was in two thousand and seven. The city charter has continuously included a provision that requires the city, rather, the mayor sign contracts and legal instruments in which the city is a party. Next slide, please. This kind of outlines what, what separates the mayor from the council members. The mayor has three unique duties that the mayor and the mayoral holds per the city charter. The first is in Article eleven, and that is that the mayor signs contracts. In Article fifteen, the mayor signs ordinances and we all know that. We see the ordinances that we adopt with his signature on it. And then in Article twenty-six, the mayor appoints members to our boards, committees, and commissions. Next slide, please. This is exactly what's in, in part, what's contained within Article eleven. And it reads as follows, "In the name and on behalf of the city, the mayor shall sign all contracts, deeds, bonds, and other legal instruments in which the city is a party." Of the three mayoral duties that were listed on the previous slide, Article eleven is the only one not currently being adhered to. Next slide, please. So this, this, this proposed ordinance really moves towards, moves us towards compliance. As I mentioned earlier, the city charter empowers the mayor as one of his three official duties outlined in the charter with final review and approval authority. And this, this directly helps the city council. It helps ensure faithful execution of city council decisions, ordinances which he already signs, and then of course, contracts, which is not currently being done. The proposed ordinance ensures compliance with city charter Article eleven and better clarifies its implementation and interpretation. Next slide, please. So this is what the ordinance is doing. This is how we're going to implement this. First, it adds a chapter and then it's adding three sections to that chapter. The title of the chapter is Mayor. It's going to be contained in chapter two point zero five and it adds these three sections. Oh one oh codifies Article eleven. Oh two oh clarifies alternate signature authority in the case of sickness or absence of the mayor. In the draft ordinance, you can see that that will be performed by the city manager in the absence of the mayor. And in oh three oh, we clarify the exceptions to this ordinance regarding section two point one six, which is the purchase order authority given to the city manager, which includes a spending, a spending limit. Next slide, please. So in addition to clarifying the implementation, we're clarifying the interpretation. This proposed ordinance will apply to legal instruments generically classified as contracts, deeds, and bonds. It also applies to legal instruments that contain a written promise by another party to pay the city a sum of money or other bargain for consideration. And this would include something like leases, easements, entitlements, concessions, et cetera. And there is a section, section six, within the proposed ordinance that, that basically says the ordinance shall be liberally construed to implement its purposes, which is to say, we'll do everything we can to make sure it happens. And then just as a final slide, I prepared, I ended up getting the draft copy of the, of the nineteen twenty-seven charter, which is written in Julia Platt's own hand. And I've underlined the section that basically we're proposing to adopt as part of this ordinance. It just basically highlights the fact that it's been there from the beginning and it currently exists in our charter and this proposed ordinance is just to bring us into compliance. That concludes my presentation, Mayor.
Thank you. Do we have any public comment?
Yes. Anthony Chiani, you have the floor.
Welcome.
Thank you very much. And I, I just want to send my appreciation to Councilmember Coletti. This is, it's phenomenal that this has been the way it has been for so long without this authorization or without this requirement. I can think of many instances where the city has lost lots of money because the mayor was not involved in the authorization of monies being spent on agreements and contracts. And this is long overdue. Please, please implement this process. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Inga Lawrence and Doimer, you have the floor.
Welcome.
Thank you, Sandra, and Mayor and council members. Our city founders knew how to build in a system of checks and balances when they formulated our charter. This ordinance would codify what is already in our charter, which has sadly been ignored for some time. I feel it's very important to get this ordinance on the books to clarify actions that must be taken. It brings more clarity, transparency, and certainly would help to bring back public trust to Pacific Grove's governance. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
I see no other hands raised.
Do we have council comments on this item? Councilmember McAdams.
Thank you, Mayor, and thank you, Councilmember Coletti, for bringing this forward. I support it and I, I think that this is just another step in the right direction with, with regards to being transparent and gaining the public trust. I am curious to know what Mayor Peak thinks about this. Thank you.
Councilmember Paduri.
Yeah, I know the Administrative Services Director is here. I would like to know what sort of thoughts are on this, especially from a financial impact perspective as well as an audit perspective.
So member Paduri through the mayor. From a financial perspective, it could be just, it could just be really a delay in the time for processing, depending on how the structure works. We would look to result, to revisit all of our contracts that we have, our standard templates, because we would have to change those as well as our routing mechanisms to get the signatures. Our auditors would may comment on it just to, to say that, you know, is there checks and balances in, from an elected official's perspective that, at the end of the day, while we wouldn't suspect our, our mayor would, would handle things inappropriately, that there's not like undue influence after the full council has approved, has approved the actual contract. That's, that's the only thing that they have commented, but they will not, you know, fully comment until they see how everything is running and up in place.
Got it. Thank you. Can I also call the city manager? I would like to understand the legal implications of such proposal as well as what kind of a risk are we facing by introducing this? The, the city lawyer, Dave Lorino.
Oh, okay. I'm sorry, you, you had said city manager.
Oh, sorry.
I can screw this, the, the question is, would arise, what happens in that circumstance if the mayor did not sign the contract? What discretion does the mayor have? I, I believe that's the question that the auditors want to have. And if this is enacted into law, I would construe the mayor's authority to be just one in the same akin to his authority to sign ordinance. He does not have discretion to edit the ordinance. He has a review function to make certain that that's the, what was approved by the council. So I, I, I would see the, the mayor's authority. So I, 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 I would see the, uh, the mayor's authority to be a ministerial one. Uh, if this was a discretionary one, then it would come to, uh, then the question would be, what review authority was, would apply to that exercise of discretion? And because there is no review authority, I have to assume that this is a ministerial act to make certain as long as it's approved, as long as it's within budget, that, that, then is the contract, uh, approved as the form, and then the signature would occur.
Okay, understood. Um, I, I have a couple of more questions, sorry, before I frame anything here. So, uh, having said that, from the city lawyer, that this is a ministerial task essentially, uh, back to Mr. Coletti, uh, is that the intent of this, uh, proposal? That it's a ministerial task, that the mayor would just sign whatever is passed on to him and end of matter?
Uh, through the mayor? Yep, yes, Jeff, uh, Councilmember, uh, Pedori, absolutely. This, this is basically a set of eyes, another set of eyes. It's, and it's doing exactly what the city attorney said. The, the mayor currently signs ordinances. He can't edit them. He can't say, "Well, I don't like this ordinance, so I'm sending it back." It is, it is, uh, it is ministerial or, you know, kind of official in nature. It is not meant to impede. It's actually meant as a mechanism to make sure what council has approved is actually, uh, what's ending up in the document. And it's a, uh, it's basically kind of establishing a feedback mechanism that has always been part of our charter, and, and now we're just making sure that that feedback mechanism is, is, uh, is implemented once again.
So what I'm surmising, Councilmember Coletti, is the paper or whatever instrument that goes to the mayor, all that is going to happen is that the mayor is going to sign it. End of story.
Well, assuming, yes, I mean, there's some assumptions in that. Perhaps if everything is correct to form, then yes, he would. And, and a lot of this stuff, by the way, happens through e-signatures, so a PDF would be sent to the mayor. Uh, there's really not a lot of overhead involved in this process. And through the Adobe e-signs, he would sign it. But say he noticed, for instance, a complete, a sentence was missed, or there was a misspelling, or whatever. Uh, it is a, it's intended to be just another set of eyes to review the document to make sure it's consistent with what has been authorized previously by the city council. It's, it really, you know, one of the, uh, speakers during public comment mentioned checks and balances. And that's kind of true. I see it just as a review, kind of to provide the feedback uh, to staff that, yes, this is exactly what we did. And, uh, it's an important function. You know, right, right now, it's, it's currently handled by staff. Uh, well, staff didn't authorize a contract. The city council did. So that's where the framers genius, uh, or, you know, the authors of our, of our, uh, charter come in. They recognize that someone who's an elected official, who has direct accountability to the people, is the one that is going to sign our ordinances, is going to sign our contracts. Um, and it's all for the benefit of the council. That's really important to understand. That, uh, the mayor, through his review of the document, actually, um, will be able to see and then approve the document that it's consistent with the council action.
Thank you. And, and just to, my, my, I, I just Googled ministerial, what, what it means, and it actually says ministerial is without regard to or the exercise of his or her own judgment. So essentially, what it means is you're just signing paper. You're not, you're doing a spell check or something where a sentence is missing, but you're not exercising any judgment on whatever is going on. So I think the, I think I have a question then for the mayor, because, uh, I need, I'm curious to know, Mayor, what your thoughts are. This is impacting your function primarily. Why would you want to do this?
Let's hear from our fellow council members before I chime in. I don't want to bias this discussion, which is good. I really appreciate it. Councilmember Smith and Councilmember Tomlinson.
Yeah, so, um, you know, uh, this whole feedback thing, that, I mean, when we pass, when we, when we enter contracts, when we, uh, pass policies and have staff uh, execute the policy of the board, that is a review mechanism. That is the review mechanism. So to add another layer of review in a ministerial context is actually inconsistent as well. Because if you're having another set of eyes, that's implying that you're actually looking at the contract again for another time, and I think, I think we've done a lot of that recently. I think we need to bring it back up to the thirty thousand foot view of things, and I don't, and focus on the policy, and staff ha- often has to execute the policies that we, that we enact. And so I, I think that basically contracts are legal function. So I, I've noticed an uptick in, in our review of contracts, but in the recent past. But, but primarily, the city attorney's office will draft these contracts. And they will be, you know, they will be executed by the representatives of the city, whether that be uh, the city manager, um, and the ordinances are, are, are signed by the mayor. So, I mean, I don't, I personally, I'm not going to support this, because some of the questions that, um, ultimate Pedri asked were interesting, and I just don't want there to be any gray area in that particular area. I think that once we've gone through the policy, we've set the policy, the contract's created based on our, our enaction of policy, and, and that's the end of it. So, and it should be what we said it was uh, without any other layers of complexity. Thank you.
Councilmember Tomlinson.
Thank you, Mayor. Um, so I, I think that from what I'm hearing, the, what, what I'm hearing is that we want the mayor to sign, you know, have the signature, signing ability. And, uh, you know, I think that's fine. I mean, it, what I, what I think I'm hearing my other council members say is what they don't want is the mayor to have another bite at the apple later on to make changes um, after we've all agreed upon something. So I don't think anybody wants that, including what's being proposed. So my question is, okay, we've approved something. It gets written. The ci- the staff works on it. Lo- the lawyers work on it. The mayor reads it. The mayor signs it. If, um, I, I would just like to know, I'm assuming that if the mayor reads it and is like, you know what? This isn't right, or this isn't what, what we were intending, then what does he do? And my hope is that it would be, we would come back to us, um, before it gets, it gets signed. I mean, it wouldn't be him going back and forth with staff to come up with the solution, because that's, first of all, this is more work for him, and it, it's only a single voice, and I don't think he would do that anyway. So if it got to a point where something was on his desk for signing, and he had question of it, um, I would hope that there would not be conversation right there, that it would come back to the council for clarity, so that it can be written correctly. If that, if that's what, so then, i- in that case, um, if that's the operations we're going to go, then my expectation is that everything that goes before the mayor, he reads it, makes sure that i's are dotted, that t's are crossed, and it was a, it meets the spirit of what was approved by the seven of us, and then he signs it. And, um, you know, when I first read this, I thought, man, we don't want to increase the mayor's workload, while this mayor has a lot of time, thank, thankfully. Uh, I, not every mayor of Pacific Grove is going to want to increase workload, but I don't think this is a huge lift. I think this is um, somebody giving, uh, a check and a balance to our staff. And if I was staff, I think I would uh, be appreciative of, of having somebody read over what is being signed. Um, and, and actually have it being signed by, by a, a person who represents, um, the seven of us. So it, it makes sense to me. Um, I just, I guess, Councilmember Coletti can, and, and the mayor, when he speaks, I think will address it. But I would just want to be sure that it, this isn't going to be, um, some additional editing that gets to go on after the fact. Um, and nobody ever seems to, you know, operate that way in the city, so I would expect that that's not the case. So, those are my thoughts, Mayor. Thanks.
Thank you. Councilmember McGathams.
Thank you, Mayor. I have a question for our city attorney. If this didn't come to council, and Mayor Peak said, "Hey, I'd like to do this, and it's in our charter," what would that look like?
The charter has, the charter has, uh, expressed this requirement, uh, as has been pointed out since it was first drafted. Nonetheless, it's been interpreted over time before Mr. Harvey, before my tenure, to not require signatures on matters that had been approved by the council, uh, specifically that were budgeted. And if it had been approved by council, then, uh, it, it was seen to be a ministerial function that, uh, could be, uh, executed by the city manager, and that's in fact what has happened. So if without this, uh, then that opportunity would still exist for that interpretation. This ordinance would remove that interpretation, uh, and require the mayor's signature. It does, there are, are some assumptions that I've heard, uh, and, uh, it, and that is what happens in that circumstance where the mayor would not choose to sign, uh, just as if there was an ordinance, the mayor would not choose to sign. Well, then it, I think the only answer is that it would have to come back to council or to, to resolve that and to get specific direction on that.
Thank you. The, I appreciate that. You know, and just, um, just like the mayor currently signs our ordinances, signs our minutes, you know, I, I think it has the same spirit uh, that Councilmember Tomlinson was talking about. It's just that sort of checks and balances and, and uh, another set of eyes. And also, I look at it as by having the mayor, you know, sign contracts, leases, and et cetera. That's sort of like having us represented and, and making sure that, you know, what we communicated at the meeting, uh, is actually in the binding legal, uh, document. So, I very much, uh, appreciate this dialogue, and, uh, just like my colleagues, I'm looking forward to hearing what the mayor has to say.
Well, I, uh, thank, uh, Councilmember Coletti for bringing this, uh, forward. Obviously, my mayor's manual, uh, didn't highlight this particular article in our charter. I, you know, there's, uh, quite a few thoughts. Um, well, one is about editing a document, and, um, I, I recall not long after I was, uh, first elected the mayor, and, and there was something in an ordinance, and I was, I'd s- s- uh, underlined a some word or something to emphasize or de-emphasize it as I was signing. This was when we used to do paper. And I did that, and our city clerk saw that and goes, "No. No, you cannot change this document." So I got my, I got my, uh, um, verbal hand slapped, and she, she nicely printed off another page. I, I signed it. So it, it's not, uh, uh, an exercise in my editing or changing what council um, has approved. And in fact, it's just the opposite, that, that I am verifying that the end document is what we all approved. Uh, and I'm not sure there were going to be many documents, uh, that would be conceptual in nature, because most of our documents, if not all the documents council uh, approves, um, are already drafted, and they, if they're not, they should be part of our uh, agenda packet.
Exactly.
And so if it's an agreement, it's part of our agenda packet, contract, um, then, then I, I'm just signing it off. That's, that's ministerial. I'm just, but it is allows me to, to, to verify on behalf of council that, yes, um, this is the action that, that, uh, we took. Um, there, there is an inconsistency if we don't do this, which has been happening for a long time, is, is, well, why am I, if you say, well, these, you know, contracts, for example, merit, it's non-ministerial, city council already approved it, it's in the minutes, then I don't know why I'm signing anything, quite frankly. Um, why am I even bothering signing ordinances? So, um, I'm just looking at the flip side of not doing this. And so that doesn't make sense to me. So, yeah, I support it, and fortunately, we're now on, uh, DocuSign, and so it's, uh, our documents now are signed electronically, digital signatures, and I would expect that we'll carry on in the future. It makes it very quick and easy. I do try to read all the ordinances when I'm at fixing my digital signature. I try to scan them all, but I, I get the gist. Yeah, this is what council already approved, and, and, and I sign it, uh, electronically. So I think, I think this is a good step. It, it, uh, brings us consistency with our charter. And I, I feel actually, uh, very comfortable with, with implementing our charter and adhering to the spirit, and I don't think we should be deciding which parts of our charter to, uh, to adhere to and which parts we're just going to ignore. So I think it's a good thing. It's another check, and, and the documents that come to me will come via staff, whether that's through our city clerk or the, uh, public services. So this isn't an end run around staff. I'm not approving things without the city manager, because ultimately, everything goes through his office as well. So I think this is, this is a good thing, and we might get some more clarification from our city manager, I mean, excuse me, our, our city attorney on what documents this should, um, entail. And I don't know whether we have enough definition, whether there's um, clarity enough in this particular ordinance, or whether we, we need some more clarity. Mr. Laredo, would you care to comment?
I'd be happy to. Uh, Mr. Mayor, I'd, I'd be very reluctant to, at this stage, add definitions, uh, to this, uh, ordinance. Uh, definitions are, can be very, very tricky. Uh, the act of defining something, the act of listing, uh, what is included, also includes the act of not including things that are not listed. So, uh, for instance, if you list a signature for bonds, then if you haven't mentioned certificates of participation, then that's not included. And, and so it, it is a tremendously difficult exercise to come up with that list, uh, to do that. Uh, I, I believe that, uh, Mr. Coletti did accurately, uh, um, capture the gist of my understanding in his PowerPoint, which is, in essence, uh, that this applies to contracts. This applies to, uh, when individuals have an expectancy to perform a service for compensation and, and to be paid for that in one way or the other. Uh, and, and that's, so this applies to contracts and other formal, uh, legal instruments that, that, uh, do obligate the individuals. It would not apply to permits. It would not allow, apply to licenses. It would not, uh, apply to the exercise of uh, governmental authority, uh, in that in- instance. Uh, if there was a, and, and, and I would If there was a, and, and, and I would suggest that we, it's easier to, you, you know it when you see it. So if, if in fact, we, if this were interpreted to be in a wrongful sense, then you have the opportunity to come back and add definitions at a future time. But I think that if you start off with the effort of saying, we need to define this very, very carefully and narrowly, that that would then be a huge undertaking. And, and I would, I would counsel against that at least to begin with.
Councilmember Coletti, you have your virtual hand up. Are you?
Yes, I, I, I just have a couple of comments, Your Honor, if that's okay.
Please.
Well, I appreciate the city attorney's outline of what's involved here. And I, I also appreciate Councilmember Tomlinson's question about, you know, is this just the mayor editing or is this just the mayor approving what we've already done? And it's definitely the latter. There's no intention to bypass anyone or anything with this proposed ordinance. So if there are no further questions, I'm prepared to make a motion, Your Honor.
Please.
I move to introduce and hold the first reading of an ordinance to amend the Pacific Grove Municipal Code to add chapter 2.05 to address signatures on contracts and other legal instruments and direct publication of a summary as approved by the city attorney.
Second.
May we have a vote, please?
Uh, yes, Your Honor. Councilmember Coletti.
Aye.
Councilmember McAdams.
Aye.
Councilmember Padere.
No.
Councilmember Smith.
Oh.
Councilmember Tomlinson.
Aye.
Mayor Peak.
Aye.
Motion carries four, two, one. Councilmember Emilio absent.
Thank you. It's now after eight, well, after eight. And we're going to take a break. Let's return at eight thirty-two. And we'll hear the Monterey Regional Waste Management District item immediately following the break. Let's restart the meeting. If council members could turn on their videos so we can see that you are present, that would be much appreciated. Okay, we've got a quorum. We're now here, item fourteen A, Monterey Regional Waste Management District Presentation, Mr. Flanagan and Ms. Schultz. Welcome.
Thank you, Mayor. Counsel, pleasure to be here tonight. Good evening. And first off, I want to say thank you very much to the mayor and council for moving this item to just after the break this evening. I do appreciate that. I'll go ahead and start sharing my screen and get the presentation loaded. We'll get started. Great. Is everyone seeing my screen okay?
Yes.
Getting ahead of myself already. All right. Good evening. My name is Zoe Schultz. I'm the Director of Communications for the Monterey Regional Waste Management District. I'm here tonight with the General Manager, Tim Flanagan, to speak about progress made to date and responsibilities related to SB thirteen eighty-three, California's efforts to reduce short-lived climate pollutants. Tonight's presentation is by special request of Mayor Peak and as a follow-up to a presentation that was given to your council by the district's consultant, Rob Hilton, from HFNH on March third, and a written memo that Environmental Program Manager Caleb Schneider provided on April seventh. You'll note that the information in tonight's presentation has not been shared with other member jurisdictions yet or councils, and they will receive it when the franchise amendments come before them in June. So to start us off, here's a look back in time to waste disposal in Pacific Grove. This is in the early nineteen hundreds at Lover's Point. At this time, discards were transported by horse and wagon and literally dumped into the ocean, something that's completely unfathomable by today's standards. And we've come a long way. The good news is that the district is well positioned in terms of infrastructure needed to implement SB thirteen eighty-three. Something that many, many cities are grappling with. The district's infrastructure places the city in a good position to meet the mandate of SB thirteen eighty-three. And by the way, you are well represented on our jurors, on our board with Gary Bale's fifty-two years of service on our board. All of the infrastructure that you see here was developed under his guidance and his fingerprints are in everything with the exception of the purchase of the land itself and the first four years of landfilling. So he's been a fantastic leader for us and we appreciate him. There's an up-close look at the Windrow composting operation on our site. This is operated by Keith Day Company. Our program started with yard waste composting in nineteen ninety, and we've had successful commercial food scrap composting since two thousand and eight. We already have much of the compost processing equipment needed to meet the mandate for thirteen eighty-three. The material that we will receive from residential customers under thirteen eighty-three will be slightly different than before, however. It will be a combined food waste, yard waste mix. And Keith Day Company is currently working to add elements to the process to pre-screen contaminants that may appear in residential composting before it's processed. I'll provide a very brief overview of this directive from the state. SB thirteen eighty-three is the most significant waste reduction mandate to be adopted in California in the last thirty years. It requires the state to reduce organic waste, which is food waste, green waste, paper products, et cetera, by seventy-five percent by twenty twenty-five. The law also requires an increase in edible food recovery by twenty percent by twenty twenty-five. And SB thirty, thirteen eighty-three establishes a target and is not a jurisdiction, establishes a statewide target, not a jurisdictional target. So it's different than recycling targets that we've had in the past in that we are implementing programmatic changes. So to meet the deadline of January first, twenty twenty-two, CalRecycle expects that jurisdictions are planning and making programmatic and budgetary decisions regarding the requirements. This slide outlines some of those activities to provide organics collection to all residents and businesses, to establish edible food recovery program, conduct outreach and education, procure organic material, and provide capacity planning. And enforcement won't take for, won't take effect until twenty twenty-four. And I'm happy to report that we're tracking well to meet these requirements. So as background, I thought it would be helpful to understand the relationship between the Monterey Regional Waste Management District and the City of Pacific Grove. While the city is responsible for implementation of SB thirteen eighty-three, the district is assisting in planning and organizing all of our member jurisdictions to achieve these targets. Our technical advisory committee has been meeting monthly and working subgroups have been meeting every other week to plan a jointly coordinated, coordinated effort. Caleb Schneider on your staff has been instrumental in this planning process. And you'll notice a part of this diagram that your hauler green waste recovery is not under the district's purview. So for the purposes of tonight's presentation, I'll be focusing on the district's role. So here's an overview of roles and responsibilities between the district and the city. On the district side of things, we will continue commercial food scrap compost processing. We will develop and sustain mixed organic yard and food waste processing infrastructure. And we'll plan, permit, and secure additional processing capabilities for mixed organics composting and conduct education and outreach to all of our generators in English and Spanish. On the city side of things, the city will be required to provide organic waste collection services to all residents and businesses. This will be done through green waste recovery, your hauler, to establish an edible food recovery program to all tier-one and tier-two commercial edible food generators. This particular item is being handled as a part of our TAC and organized at a county level and will be done through a third party. So you have a lot of support there. And there will be a procurement requirement to procure compost from, from what is brought in. And this is, it's different from past recycling in that this particular law requires the jurisdiction to be part of the market development of materials. And lastly, the city will be required to monitor compliance and conduct enforcement. So moving on to the cost of implementation, you'll note that the district only represents sixteen percent of the total cost of your solid waste system. Our fees are incorporated into the green waste to bill, but we don't set the bill. Most of the cost, seventy-one percent, is in collection. Therefore, the district will have minimal control over SB thirteen eighty-three implementation costs. As for that sixteen percent of the bill that relates to processing and disposal, the district, district staff are proposing to our board that there be no disposal or processing rate increases in fiscal year twenty-one, twenty-two. In addition, we already have in place a rate structure for source-separated food waste for commercial customers. And on the collection side, rate amendments are expected to come before your council in June. You'll note, though, that the original franchise agreements that were constructed were done so in a forward-thinking manner and that the inclusion of food waste into yard waste was already accounted for and will be done at no additional charge. That said, there are other elements of thirteen eighty-three that will have minimal costs associated. Those costs will include things like public education, procurement of kitchen pails, contamination monitoring and reporting, and edible food recovery. These will all be shared costs amongst the district's member jurisdictions. For example, the jurisdictions have decided to, as a part of the TAC, to allocate a shared cost of fifty thousand dollars for public education over the course of the first year for thirteen eighty-three. In addition, the district will be budgeting an additional, additional seventy-five thousand dollars towards that effort for public education specifically. And a complete review of all SB thirteen eighty-three expected costs will be brought forward and shared in an upcoming council meeting in the form of an MOU between yourself and the district. So in closing, and since this is a public meeting and many Pacific Grove residents are fantastic stewards of our planet, I'll just emphasize that while we're excited for this legislation to take effect to reduce greenhouse gas emissions, for now, residents are encouraged to compost food scraps at home, at home through their home composting system or by taking them to a local farmer's market for drop-off. Food scrap collection won't be implemented curbside until January twenty twenty-two. Thank you for your time. That concludes my presentation, and I'm happy to take any questions that you may have.
Thank you. Do we have any public comment?
I see no hands raised, Mr. Mayor. I have one hand raised, just a moment. Beth Walker, you have the floor.
Welcome.
Thank you so much. I'm going to make this quick, but I just wanted to say that I think this is long overdue. I'm very excited to participate. And I think the key is, if you make it easy, people will adopt it and they will embrace it. And as someone who has taken their composting to the farmer's market, it's not always the most convenient and easiest thing to do. But this is fantastic. And Zoe, thank you for your presentation. And I, and I, you know, if, if we can accelerate this in any way or help you in any way, just let us know. Thank you.
Thank you.
Wendy Wendy Giles, you have the floor.
Good evening, Mayor and City Council. Again, thank you, Zoe Schultz, for bringing this to council as a presentation. I'd like to encourage any commercial building owners to actively get involved in getting the yellow can. We have one on-site and it's really pretty incredible how much food can go into that thing. And I'm really looking forward to whatever public outreach is being planned. And we will be absolutely involved in participating and really hoping that a lot of other commercial properties will do as well. Thank you.
Thank you.
I see no other hands raised. Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Tomlinson.
Thank you, Mayor. And thank you, Zoe or Ms. Schultz, for coming and giving this presentation. Thank you, Mayor, for asking for the presentation. I appreciate your time this evening, and I, I also, I'm very happy to get the update. I, I just wanted to clarify one thing, and then I have a question. The citizens, I, I think that in the last couple of years, I've heard a lot about the yellow bins and being how to contribute with the yellow bins at the farmer's market and if you're a restaurant and being on the program in that way. But for how individual households, my understanding is the plan will be what we'll put our composting into the green cans. We're not going to get new cans, right? So I just wanted to make sure that, that, that I'm saying that right and that, that's how I see a lot of head shaking. So that's good. And then I just had a quick question on slide eight. It says that the city will be required to procure certain levels of compost, renewable gas, fuels, electricity, these types of things. Is there a different amount that the city is required to procure for each of those items? And I'm kind of curious about the renewable gas, how, how the city will achieve that.
Um, short answer is that, no, the city will not be required to purchase all of those things. I think those are options under the CalRecycle regulations for the city. And compost will probably be the one that the city will end up procuring the most amount of, I would imagine. That would be the easiest to undertake, although it's, it's not necessarily going to be an easy undertaking. This is something that's new. You know, to be in, to be on the end of the market side of things. Tim, was there anything else you wanted to add to that?
Yeah, I, I, I would. Thank, thank you very much again, Mayor Peak. Thanks for giving us the opportunity tonight. I'm Tim Flanagan, the General Manager for the Waste Management District. One of the things that the district did collaboratively is that when we went forward with the model franchise agreement, one of the things we did was construct a truck yard for maintenance and administration on our property. Along with that, we developed infrastructure that fuels the vehicles that drive in Pacific Grove and other cities on the peninsula with compressed natural gas. That was also in mind for us to make a conversion of our landfill gas to renewable gas, renewable CNG that will fuel your trucks. We are in the process of completing that. The infrastructure's been installed. We're finishing the permitting now so that literally the vehicles that drive through town and pick up trash and or compost and recycling will be fueled with the very products that they deliver to us. So it is really a closed circle, a closed loop of what product you deliver will end up fueling the trucks that drive through town. That's a renewable natural gas. It's lower in carbon intensity, and you get to check that box in your matrix of things that you're doing to reduce your carbon footprint.
Well, that's, that's exactly what I was hoping you'd say. So thank you for explaining that. And, and are the trucks currently able to, Well, thank, that's uh, that's exactly what I was hoping you'd say. So thank you for explaining that. And, and are the trucks currently able to um, you know, efficiently run on renewable gas or is that a?
Yeah, no, a- a- absolutely. And, and in fact, um, they, they're uh, more than in, in some of the companies, more than seventy percent of their vehicle fleets are now running on compressed natural gas. So um, I, I ran those when I ran a hauling company myself in, in Orange County in the early two thousands. And the technology has advanced. So yes, those trucks are actually very fine and, and very dependable for your residence's collection services.
Okay, great. I, I have lots of other questions, but I'll look into it on my own. I just like that stuff. So thank you very much.
Please, please reach out to us. Um, we'll provide your, our contact information. Zoe, and my contact information with your city clerk. Please don't hesitate to shoot us an email or give us a call. Or, or direct that through, you know, Gary Bales. That's, that's what we're, we're here for. So we're, we're happy to work collaboratively with you and, and with Ben and with Caleb. So any questions you want, we're here to help you.
Thank you. And, and thanks for what you're doing for our peninsula. It's fantastic.
Thank you.
Councilmember Pedori.
Thank you, Mayor. Uh, I would also like to thank uh, Mr. Flanagan and Ms. Schotz uh, for hanging in here nine, nine PM, providing us some uh, really great information. I really liked the statistic where, where it says uh, seventy-five percent uh, essentially of uh, organic waste will be reduced in the coming four years. Uh, I think that's, that's a very impressive and important statistic. Uh, I know as housing grows, landfill area become shrinks or whatever be the case, however you want to view it. Uh, I think this is a very important endeavor that we're undertaking. So appreciate all the help that you're providing here. And thank you for filling us with valuable information at nine PM. Thank you.
Councilmember McAdams.
Thank you, Mayor. I'll just be uh, brief. Uh, a comment. I am really excited that we'll be able to um, compost in the green, in the yard waste bin. I think that that's going to make it um, simple and easy for our households to sort of get on board. And uh, Mr. Flanagan, could you provide us with a uh, update regarding um, recycle material and how, how that's going?
Sure, we, we can, we can do that. Um, we will be conducting part of our annual survey in July. As you know, I think we've reached the council a couple of different times on your percentage of contamination that's in the recycling cart. Pacific Grove has actually been pretty good and one of the better performers on the peninsula in terms of the amount of unrecyclable material put in your blue carts for recycling. Um, I'm happy to say that we've improved our efficiencies and the sorting technology at the plant. So even though we've received more material, uh, we actually have less material going out to the landfill as residue. And the, the good news is that, as you know, the last couple of years have been very challenging in the recycling market with the uh, PRC or the People's Republic of China shutting off uh, recyclable to, to China. However, new markets have emerged in, in the Pacific Rim and material prices are coming back up in recovery. And we're currently finding home for all the material that we're, that we're cycling now. So probably late this summer, we'll be able to come back to the council and through Caleb and Ben, provide you an update on what our recycling uh, survey did in terms of the percent of contamination. I would expect we'd be able to bring that to you uh, probably in the September or October timeframe.
Thank you so much. And uh, lastly, Mr. Bales, oh my goodness, thank you for your continued service. I think you're on year fifty-two? Oh my goodness. Good to see you.
I'll also um, echo the thanks uh, for uh, Ms. Schotz and Mr. Flanagan for being here tonight and, and Mr. Bales. Um, and uh, it's certainly a direction we need to go. And I, this was really great news. I was expecting you were going to tell us that there'd be rate increases that our residents would see rate increases on, on their uh, on their bi-monthly bills and to hear that uh, there'll be no rate increases um, for the next year or so. That's, that's really good news. And, and the fact that people will just be putting their uh, organic waste into the green waste and that makes it easy. Did I get that right?
You, just to be clear on the rate increases, Mr. Mayor and for the public, um, the, the district is projecting no rate increases on our side. You will have some contractual uh, rate increases that are part of your model of your, your franchise agreement with green waste recovery. And, and those will be coming back to you in June, but you have a prescriptive process for how those rates can be increased. And that's by, by contract. So um, I would let Ben and, and Caleb, you know, walk you through that next, next month. We are not going to add to that burden from the district and increase that, but uh, you will have uh, more than likely some rate increases that are prescriptive as far as the franchise agreement. But um, I'll let Caleb and, and Ben project uh, as to what those be. And you'll see those for council approval uh, next month. Just to be clear.
So do we have an estimate as to say what the average uh, uh, residents, how their bill would go up? You know, we talking five, ten percent more? Any idea?
I would, I would give that to, to, to Caleb or Ben uh, to, to answer that, I would think.
Mayor, I don't think that, I don't, I don't think either one of us should be answering that question at this time. I, I'm not prepared to answer it. I don't think Caleb is either.
So, so we'll hear about uh, potential rate increases next month. Is green waste recovery bringing an MOU to city council with those rate increases? Is that, that's what I'm hearing?
You're muted, Mr. Schneider.
Uh, Mr. Mayor, I'll, I'll work with Caleb and we'll, we'll deliver you an answer on that. He's having a technical difficulty.
Okay. Well, thank you again, um, both for, for being here tonight and giving this presentation. And uh, we look forward to all the, all the good work that you're doing to help preserve our environment.
Thank you again for the opportunity.
Let's resume back to where we left off on item eleven A, resolution adopting, oops. Sorry. Lost my place. Item thirteen A, Police Records Management System Award. Ms. Francis, welcome.
Thank you. Good evening. Have a presentation here. Bring it up. All right, can you all see that?
Yes.
Okay. Hello, I'm here this evening uh, to request city council um, uh, award, a contract with Mark forty-three for a new police records management system. Um, here we call it uh, an RMS which stands for uh, Records Management System. So if I use that in the presentation, that's what that means. Um, it's a critical uh, core function of the police department, as you can imagine. Um, a big responsibility here is maintaining records. So it could be case and crime reports, arrest reports, traffic collisions, uh, even permits and licenses that the police department issues. Uh, as well as uh, keeping track of property and evidence and maintaining a clear chain of custody, which is critical to uh, cases. Um, in addition, the current RMS system that we have in place has been in use for over thirty years. Uh, so the procurement process, we developed a committee, um, both of internal police staff that work in patrol and investigations uh, as well as property and evidence records and of course, uh, including Mohammed from our IT department. Uh, we developed a request for proposal and we issued it uh, at the end of twenty twenty. Um, in January, uh, the RFP period closed and we received ten proposals, which for a small agency is absolutely fantastic. Um, our goal with this uh, RFP process is that other law enforcement agencies will um, uh, piggyback off of this purchase. Uh, so that way we're on uh, the same system um, together. Um, so, okay, back to my uh, procurement schedule here. Um, we met, we rated each of the proposals that we received and we invited the top five uh, to presentations and demonstrations. Um, again, we heard the demonstrations and brief demos and uh, we rated those and we narrowed it down even further. Um, in March, we cli- uh, we completed in-depth, hands-on demonstrations. Um, we called around and checked references. Um, and then uh, uh, I should have uh, updated the slide here. Um, so in May, uh, we're here and uh, we're asking for city council to approve this award. Um, and then we can get started on this uh, massive project that will probably take a year uh, to implement. Um, it's uh, it's a big project for any law enforcement agency. Um, new features that we don't currently have are integrations with our CAD and dispatch system. Uh, we contract with Monterey County and uh, they utilize a, a different vendor and to have an integration with our RMS system and our dispatch system would save a lot of staff time um, and help in uh, creating reports and statistic, statistical data. Um, it will also integrate with the uh, District Attorney's Office uh, software program, which again will save uh, staff time and uh, attorney's time um, and sharing that information and sharing case reports. Um, in addition, we're hopeful, uh, we're going to start working with the courts to see if we're able to uh, also integrate with some of their systems. And then internally, uh, Axon is our um, body worn camera, uh, and in car camera vendor. Um, so to integrate with the digital evidence side of the house, uh, the city GIS system, um, as well as uh, e-citations. Um, improved features are error detection. Um, it has a really intuitive uh, design. So I believe I'm hopeful that um, training staff should be pretty straightforward. Um, the uh, workflow is improved, the analytics and the reporting are much better um, in this new system. Uh, there's simplified ways to customize uh, certain sections. So um, we have a variety of forms that uh, that can be completed online. Um, so being able to utilize the system better, so there's less uh, or quicker data entry or, or fewer data entry. Um, the redundancy is improved. Um, it's a cloud-based system. Uh, so right now we have internal servers. Um, this system would be stored off-site, uh, which helps for redundancy purposes, but it also helps with updates and innovation. And regularly, Mark forty-three pushes out updates, which is fantastic. Um, in addition, uh, property and evidence improvements. So um, our property and evidence technician, she doesn't have a computer um, in the storage area. So be able to have a mobile device where she's able to uh, scan and barcodes and move property and evidence around would be a huge time saver. Uh, so the five-year contract price, uh, the original submission was over four hundred and seventy thousand dollars. Uh, we negotiated down to three eighty-eight and the final submission before you this evening is two seventy-nine. Uh, the first year will be paid out of a special grant funding available in our uh, uh, supplemental law enforcement uh, funding source um, at a hundred and seventy-three thousand dollars. Uh, and then thereafter, years two through five each year, uh, from our general fund operating budget, it will be twenty-six thousand dollars a year. Um, so the recommendation tonight is to enter in to a five-year agreement with Mark forty-three. So we can implement uh, this new and innovative platform for our RMS system. And that concludes my presentation.
Thank you. Do we have any public comment?
I currently do not. I do have one hand. Um, Inga Lawrence and Doimer, you have the floor.
Welcome.
Thank you, Sandra. I seriously hope this doesn't turn into the license plate reader fiasco. When you try to be first at something and the fact that not that many agencies use this system in your report, you stated that all but three use the one that you currently have. So, um, I know, but I bet there's going to be a whole lot of bugs. I say bring back a crossing guard. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Wendy Giles, you have the floor.
Welcome.
Good evening. Uh, my concern is what's the cost difference between the system that's currently being used and the system that's being proposed? And if so few other local agencies are using it, are not using the system, why are we, why are we going to use it? Thank you.
Thank you.
I see no other hands raised. Mayor Peak.
Council discussion? Councilmember Tomlinson.
Thank you, Mayor. Um, I think this is a great uh, system, or it sounds to me like a great system. And you know, coming from an organization that still uses software written in nineteen ninety-eight. Thank you, US Navy. Um, it is very difficult to have stuff that, you know, is still able to, to operate this and, and be efficient and good at what, what uh, what you're intending to do with your job. So I trust that the chief in the department is ready for change. That's why they went out for a bid to find some new software. And ten proposals to pour over and come up with one that will work best. Um, and kind of lead the way for the region of adopting this, this new software, I, I think is, is a fantastic um, move. And I also like that, you know, the bulk of it is going to be able to be paid for out of a special fund. And then about twenty-six thousand after that from the general fund for each year after that. So um, I, I support you having all the tools that you need to be able to do good police work. Um, and, and so I, I think this is a good change and probably a very necessary change for our police department.
Councilmember Pedori.
Thank you, Mayor. Uh, so Jocelyn, you had me when you said cloud-based. So just FYI. But I, I, I think uh, really the, what Councilmember Tomlinson is pointing out is really very true. Uh, from experience, I know software uh, dated really poses a challenge in several aspects. Uh, so usage maintenance, you, you can call a lot of things there. Uh, and I think uh, from a police perspective, like uh, small things like filling out incident reports, for instance, could be a painstaking ordeal right now. And I think this will help pave the way for efficiencies in, in a lot, lot, many ways than, than one. And I also believe like modern software, uh, if we use modern software properly like this, it could be the means to measure really uh, fairness as well as bringing accountability. Uh, so I think I, I'm, I'm all for it. And I actually thank uh, uh, the, the department for recognizing the need that uh, we need to update our software and getting us here. Thank you.
I had uh, the similar questions to our public. Uh, one is on the ongoing basis, years two through five, what's the incremental cost, um, Ms. Francis? Compared to what we're already paying for software? Compared to what we're already paying for software? Or similar type programs?
The increase will be roughly $8,000 a year. However, I do think that we will save a lot of staff time. In these improvements, both what Councilmember Pedore referenced was. IT time, you know, maintaining the systems, having a cloud-based system. Being able to run updates regularly and easily, and so although it is $8,000 more a year. I think we will see cost savings in other ways.
Good, and what about the question about other agencies in the county? I was a little confused as to the integration. You spoke to this new system. Will integrate better with other agencies in the county, but. Others, other agencies are not using this particular software. Could you help me understand that better?
Sure, so first off, the Mark 43 is a nationwide company from Washington DC to California. They're currently in contract negotiations with CHP. As well as State Parks and Salinas Police Department has just started implementation. And as far as the current vendor that we are on. With the exception of Del Rio's Salinas Police Department and King City, everybody is on the same system. That we're currently on, the system that we've had for over 30 years. And we want, as a region, we do want to maintain that information sharing capability that we have right now. So in the demonstrations, we had representatives from Monterey Police Department. Carmel, Marina. A lot of Greenfield, a lot of different agencies either. They were watching it online, so I think we'll be paving the way. Yes, we will be one of the first along with Salinas Police Department. But over 30 years ago, we were the first agency to go with the current vendor that we have right now. So we'll be paving the way yet again, as long as it's approved this evening.
Thank you. If there's no further discussion, Councilmember Coletti.
Thank you, Mayor, and thank you, Ms. Francis. So if we're talking about basically $300,000 every five years, so. So is that what's going to happen? We can just consider that a reoccurring expense that every five years we'll be paying. We'll have to budget basically $300,000 for the next five years for this system to support this system.
Councilmember Coletti, the first year is $173,000 and that's to implement the new system. So that includes setting up all of the fields and the users and the training and everything, so that's a one-time cost, the 173. The $26,300 a year, that is the annual fee thereafter. And certainly year six, there would be contract negotiations and determining the fees. For those following years, but that 173, that big dollar amount, that's solely year one to get the system up and running.
Okay, to establish the database. So you're saying about $25,000 a year? To keep our subscription to the service active? And then in year six, somewhere, so $25,000 a year? And we're currently paying $8,000 less than that $25,000, basically? Okay, thank you. Well, it does, it does cost a lot to transition from system A to system B. That's just a reality. I guess the fundamental question is, should we be going to A to B? I'm not an expert, so I can't really comment. I don't think there's any, just what I know about software, and I do write software, I. Sometimes there's no real prize for being the first. But. You know, you mentioned it's cloud-based. Has the city explored any of the security problems with. With cloud-based infrastructure? Basically, our records are going to be stored on our remote servers, I understand it. Is that right?
Yes, so both the FBI and DOJ have strict security standards as it relates to law enforcement data. And the backbone infrastructure system that they're using through Amazon. Is CGS compliant with both FBI and Cal DOJ.
Okay, so they're using Amazon as their cloud provider and those systems are routinely stress tested, is what you're saying? Am I understanding that correctly?
And so FBI and Cal DOJ, they do regular audits. Both of the companies as well as the law enforcement agencies to ensure we're meeting. A variety of security standards that they've set in place.
Okay. Well, thank you. I appreciate your responses.
Your Honor, I'd move approval.
Do I hear a second?
A second.
Ms., we've got a second already. Thank you, Councilmember Tomlinson, second. Councilmember Smith made the motion to approve the recommended action as stated on the agenda. Can we have a vote, please?
Yes, sir. Councilmember Smith? Councilmember Tomlinson?
Aye.
Mayor Peak?
Aye.
Councilmember Coletti?
Aye.
Councilmember McAdams?
Aye.
Councilmember Pedore?
Aye.
Motion carries 601. Councilmember Emilio absent.
We'll now move on to item 13B, Mobile Crisis Team Update. Commander Santos, welcome.
Good evening. Thank you. Mr. Mayor, Councilmembers, city staff, and members of the public, thank you for the opportunity to speak tonight. If the city clerk could bring up the, there we go. I would like to provide a brief update as to the status of the Mobile Crisis Team from Monterey County and what the Pacific Grove Police Department is doing. To work with those needing mental health assistance. Next slide. Monterey County Behavioral Health created the Mobile Crisis Team in 2011. The Mobile Crisis Team is staffed with Mobile Crisis Intervention Specialists who are either licensed or licensed eligible clinicians. They're able to respond to recalls, to calls involving people in a mental health crisis to assist law enforcement. They can provide an alternative non-law enforcement response to a mental health crisis, allowing a clinician to work with the person that was actually in crisis. The Mobile Crisis Team collaborates with first responders to recognize and help de-escalate at incidents involving a mental health crisis. The Mobile Crisis Intervention Specialist can be requested by law enforcement through a dispatch call for service. A direct telephone call to the team, or they can respond to a referral from law enforcement agency or other mental health service provider as well. Next slide. Once involved in a case, the crisis specialist can assist in determining the placement of an involuntary psychiatric hold that we call a 5150 hole. And will complete and can complete the documentation. In the event the criteria is not met for an involuntary hold. The crisis specialist can provide alternative treatment at another facility or provide resources to help assist the individual and their families. In the event that the person does not meet the criteria for a hold. And the other resources are provided, the Mobile Crisis Team can also provide transportation as well. One of the most valuable benefits of the Mobile Crisis Team is our ability to respond to referrals from law enforcement. These are not emergency calls for service. The referrals provide follow-up outreach to persons who have been contacted either through the Mobile Crisis Team. Or law enforcement and were either committed on a hold or were contacted through some sort of call for service and it was determined the person did not benefit. By contact with additional, and the person could benefit by contact with additional services. Next slide. At full staffing, the Crisis Team consists of three Mobile Crisis Intervention Specialists, one for the Peninsula, one for Salinas, and one for South Monterey County. The days and hours will be Wednesday through Saturday, 12:30 PM through 10:00 PM, and alternating Tuesdays from 1:30 PM through 10:00 PM. Next slide. Peninsula Mobile Crisis Intervention Specialist is shared with all Monterey Peninsula Law Enforcement Agencies. In 2019, this person received 259 referrals. There are no current numbers for 2020 as the program was shut down due to COVID-19 pandemic in early 2020. However, Monday, we got great news. We met with the team. They are back to full staffing and the program will resume on May 11th and they will have three clinicians staffing it. Next slide. With only three clinicians for the entire county, the Pacific Grove Police Department has been looking for ways to enhance our response. To request for assistance involving mental health challenges. The department is implementing a mental health liaison to work directly with the Mobile Crisis Team. This will be an additional duty assigned to one of our police service technicians. The police service technician has a bachelor's degree in psychology and will receive additional training, including strategic communications and crisis intervention team training. The mental health liaison will be able to assist referrals specifically for Pacific Grove community. And help direct those in need with much-needed services. Next slide. Program benefits, the mental health liaison will be able to provide assistance during times the Mobile Crisis Team is not available. By following up with our community referrals and providing resources, law enforcement responses to individuals who have needed more care in the past may be reduced. The mental health liaison will provide an additional service to our vulnerable members of our community to provide information on resources and facilities that can help them and their families. Now, next slide. In summary, the Mobile Crisis Team will provide a non-law enforcement response or resource for mental health crisis. The police department is creating a mental health liaison as an in-house resource to assist with providing referrals to our vulnerable population. And that will conclude our presentation. I'm available for any questions.
Thank you. Do we have any public comment?
I see no hands raised for public comment, Mr. Mayor.
Council discussion? Councilmember McAdams.
Thank you, Mayor, and thank you, Mr. Santos. This is an excellent agenda report. And. You know, I mean, just today, I believe there was a suicide attempt that our police department responded to. And really, you know, we've seen that the pandemic has brought. A lot of these types of calls, whether it's child welfare, domestic violence, suicide, mental health. Homelessness and on and on and on, so I really appreciate. Just being mindful about the needs of our community as well as the well-being of our, of our police officers. I mean, they have really gone through a lot this year with the pandemic as well. And so having that specialized communicator who is showing compassion and, and having resources. And really understanding. You know, how to help various individuals, I think, will be a true asset to our community, so thank you very much. I am wondering though, I have two questions. Will this person be responding with police officers? And if so, are they in full uniform or are they wearing sort of regular clothing? What would that look like?
So the. Mobile Crisis Team from Behavioral Health with the county, they are not uniformed, but they will respond out. Our internal mental health liaison will not be responding out to calls for service. They'll be assisting with, on the referral side and helping the Mobile Crisis Specialist with their caseload when they have something specific to. Our Pacific Grove community, because that, that person's responding to every agency on the peninsula. So we wanted to have some added resources within our own department. We found talent within that we had and we're going to tap our resources and use what we have in-house.
Excellent. Thank you so much and definitely, however, you know, I can advocate or support. You in this endeavor and on the department, please let me know. Thank you.
Councilmember Pedore.
Yes, thank you, Mrs. Santos. This is the first time I'm hearing you on a presentation and excellent one. Thank you. And actually, I, the, I agree with the Councilmember McAdams. It's, this is. This is really a step in the right direction and we need to continue to build upon this to see how else we can complement these services. So I'm all in for it and I'm also ready to make a motion if you like.
All right, I've got. A couple of questions. Well, this is to receive the report, so no motion will be necessary actually on this item. I had a question, Ms. Commander Santos, thank, thank you. Mental health this past year is. Out in everybody's mind in the, in the news, so this is very welcome. And if I understand, just from a practical standpoint, so. The county would go to the individual, would go out, I'm sorry, I don't have the right words, but would go out. To the, to the individual in the field. As opposed to the Pacific Grove, our Mobile Crisis Technician would not. Is that correct?
Correct. That is correct, yes.
Yeah, and it was funny, I was thinking the same thing as Councilmember McAdams about the dress. It does, you know, does the presence of, of uniforms, you know, whether they're firefighters or police, does. Is that sometimes, you know, escalate people's issues? As opposed to someone more casually dressed?
It could, and the Mobile Crisis Team from the county is not in uniform. They wear normal civilian attire.
And, because I don't know exactly where they would be located, but for one person for the entire peninsula. They'd be expected to respond to, to incident. And as the need arises?
So when we met with the team, we actually have open office space here and our goal is to actually have them housed in our department at least one day per week. We're hoping for more. And then I believe there'll be Monterey Police Department, which again, that's next door, so that would be good for us. On at least one day a week as well. And they don't work 24 hours a day. They only respond to those days and hours that they have set up right now. In a perfect scenario, we would have clinicians staffed 24 hours a day. But at this point, we'll be very happy to get them back with the hours that they originally had. So that they can respond and assist. There are also maybe times when they're in another, another city. And we have a crisis going on where we would not be able to get them and then we just rely upon the, the training and the professionalism that our officers. Are already showing every day.
And your report indicated 46 met the criteria for California Welfare and Institutions Code 5150. Is that, did I have that correct?
Forty-six.
Forty-six?
I'd have to look at the, in the timeframe, that's not.
It seemed like quite, quite a few. Illustrates that our, our community is not immune to, to people having mental health issues and concerns, so.
It is a very important issue that I'm seeing and the number here. I'm, as you all know, I came from a much larger jurisdiction. I've been here a few months and. Given an area the same size, we have, I would say, big city problems in our small city when it comes to mental. big city problems in our small city when it comes to mental health. And we need to do everything we can to help with that. And I think this is absolutely a step in the right direction by using someone in-house to provide that extra help. Knowing that there's only one member for the peninsula on on the team through the county's program.
And and I like the referral uh service that you're providing being proactive. So thank you. Thank you very much.
That that is to me the one of the most important parts because oftentimes what happens. Some some help is given on that particular incident. But what happens after? So that's what we're really looking forward to is providing the resources to not only help the individual, but who does this individual live with? Their families could need it. Um, partners, whoever it may be, to provide that additional resource so we don't have to respond out again. Um, and hopefully can make it a lasting difference.
Excellent. Thank you, Ken. Okay, moving on. To our next agenda item. Resolution in support of reuse of the National Oceanic and Atmospheric Administration Building. Ms. Kendell.
Thank you, Mayor. Good evening, Mr. Mayor. Uh, members of the council, staff and members of our public. At the April seventh, two thousand twenty-one council meeting, the city council acted on an agenda report authored by Mayor Peak and directed staff to bring forward a resolution in support of the reuse of the National Oceanic and Atmospheric Administration Building. Um, it was uh, I was tasked with that uh agenda report and so this is, this was set to hear or to be heard on the twenty-first and we ran out of time and so it was continued from that meeting pulled from the consent agenda. So I have no presentation. Uh, staff's recommendation is to adopt the resolution in support of reuse of the National Oceanic and Atmospheric Administration Building. And that concludes my report.
Thank you. And do we have any public comment on this item? I think we've got at least one person that two people have been waiting a long time.
Yes, Your Honor. We have Vicki first. Uh, Vicki, you have the floor.
Welcome.
Thank you for your patience. I know it's getting late. I'll try to be very brief. Uh, my message is just to totally support the staff in this resolution to report repurpose this building. Uh, its main asset is a series of thirty-two stunning panels in marine themes around the top of the building painted by the deservedly famous artist Rachel. As part of PG's um historical mural project, and I think the city should absolutely continue its commitment to this project. Um, the building has a history of repurposing, almost a tradition. It dates back to the middle of the last century. Um, after the Second World War, when it was perceived that the coast was potentially under threat. The Navy purchased the property and built this building as a training center for Navy pilots and personnel. Um, it's a very solid building. It was built to withstand an atomic bomb. Um, and about a decade later, it had its first repurposing as a weather facility. Um, tracking ocean currents and and predicting weather. The weather facility was moved to the airport where it is now. And then NOAA's National Marine Fisheries Service took over the building. Now the government has made it available, the federal government um for some other purpose and the concept is a meeting place for um the public and experts interested in marine science and marine-inspired art uh, in concert with the with the theme on the outside of the building. Um, it would be, it's not envisioned that there would be a large flow of of public presence there. It's not going to compete or replicate in any way, the aquarium or the Pacific Grove Museum. In fact, the museum would benefit from the small auditorium that's in the building. Every time the museum has an event, they have to set up a hundred chairs and then put them away again. So this would be a real asset. It would be an asset to the city in every way. Uh, it's it's a win-win proposition and we should not lose this treasure. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
I see no further hands raised. I I I'm sorry, I have two more hands raised. Uh, Lisa Chiani, you have the floor.
Welcome.
Um, the coast team is an impressive group with a clear understanding of the potential for the former NOAA property to shine a bright light on Pacific Grove's prominent and unique role in marine science and culture and provide for that role to be enriched and expanded. As I know you understand, it's extremely important to have a resolution approved tonight to avoid delay in moving forward with so much to do. It's also important for the city to be as helpful as it can be in facilitating the acquisition of the former NOAA property. Protection and stewardship of the city's environmental and cultural resources is the council's responsibility and needs to be acknowledged in this resolution. In order for the resolution to be most effective and best serve the interests of the community, it it needs to be an accurate and persuasive document for enlisting local, state and federal cooperation. I urge you to make one vital addition to the findings to provide clarity that could help substantially in persuading the federal government to do the right thing and in getting help from other agencies. The following suggested factual language could be added as finding number two with other numbering adjusted as I wrote to you, to convey the regulatory context for the cultural and environmental sensitivity of this property and its designated land use. So finding number two would read, the former NOAA property is in the Pacific Grove Coastal Zone and it is designated for open space institutional land use. The coastal zone is designated an archaeologically sensitive area and the property is a recognized archaeological site. The site contains environmentally sensitive habitat areas, including sand dunes and Monterey Pine Forest. The city knows this. It's important for the city to communicate it. Please make this important change to give the resolution a very basic finding that will provide critical information. And please approve a resolution tonight. Thank you.
Thank you.
Uh, Louise Ramirez, you have the floor.
Welcome.
Only to unmute yourself, Ms. Ramirez. I think we can hear you now.
Could you reset the clock, please, for Tribal Chair Ramirez? Thank you. Ramirez, could you speak speak louder? We can barely hear you.
Let me see. I think I'm practically yelling over here anyway. I start again. Uh, Alani Postinowa Nation objects to the transfer of sacred sites. The land has been disturbed. Artifacts and ancestors studied without our consent. We request that they that there be no further disturbance. Ocean requests that Pacific Grove City Council vote for the NOAA building include Ocean. The land is of the utmost importance and sacredness to Alani Postinowa Nation. Tribal members and tribal government, the continued exclusion of Ocean continues the erasure of our culture, our history and our future. Ocean requests that this land be returned to Alani Postinowa Nation. Thank you.
Thank you.
Anthony Chiani, you have the floor.
Thank you very much. I'm sorry it's so late, but um, I think you guys have a great tradition of um dealing with dynamic issues such as this one. Um, and also being open, open-minded and agile in what you do. Um with regard to that, I think you've demonstrated in the past your ability to tweak and vote on second readings for ordinances and resolutions to make them smarter and better. I think you should do that tonight. Um, I applaud what you're doing. Um, I think the notion of adding um, some clarification to it is really important because this resolution will be studied and read and reviewed in offices of local, state and federal um leadership. Um, please make Pacific Grove proud of what you do. Please make sure that this includes the aspects that the tribal leader suggested. Uh, and I think with all due respect, the aspects that my wife Lisa recommended. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
I see no other hands raised, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Do we have council discussion on this item? Council member Claddy.
Thank you, Mayor. Um, real quickly, the purpose to oh, to remove this from the consent I as a consent agenda item was to receive public input. And we have done that. It is part, it is now part of the uh, the record. Uh, and I'm prepared to make a motion if you're ready.
Seeing no other hands, yes, please.
Um, I move to adopt a resolution in support of reuse of the National Oceanic and Atmospheric Administration Building.
A second.
Can I hear a second? Thank you. Discussion on the motion. I'll just make uh, one, one comment that I personally recommend that any future users of this property should include ocean involvement. And uh, Tribal Chair Louise Ramirez spoke to that tonight. And um, I'd like to add that the city does not own this property. And we are not selling it because we don't own it and we do not uh, have uh we are not uh, being asked to decide who will own it. And if you have uh, interest in this property, that information can be found online. General Services Administration, GSA, they have the website. Search on the address thirteen fifty-two Lighthouse Avenue, Pacific Grove. Council member McAdams.
Thank you, Mayor. I am just wondering on April fourth in two thousand twelve. Uh, resolution twelve dot O two five was passed by that council uh pertaining to the NOAA building. So is this resolution replacing the intent of that one? Because they seem to be similar.
That's a great question. Uh, let's uh, turn to our city attorney. Um, you're hitting him cold.
I I have recently looked at the two thousand twelve resolution. My understanding, and I have not studied this extensively, but my understanding is that the uh the process by which excess property is uh transferred by the federal government has changed since the date of that resolution. So I don't believe, I believe this resolution has much different effect and I don't believe that the former resolution is presently capable of being implemented.
Excellent. Thank you very much for that, Mr. City Attorney. And then one question is by passing this resolution, we're not committing to coast, we're not committing to anything. Is that, is that correct? We're not committing to one specific entity. Um, we're not giving permission. Uh, we're just I guess gently nodding.
If that question's directed at my um I'd say we are providing support for coast and the aims of that organization. For reuse of the of the NOAA building for scientific, cultural, environmental and educational purposes. So we are.
We don't have any sort of agreement with coast. Coast is not necessarily an entity or a nonprofit.
That's, that's correct. This is not an agreement. There, there is no agreement.
And Mr. Mayor, if I can just add to that, please.
Please.
This is the operative language uh of the resolution is in two parts, it's in section two that the council supports reuse of the building. And then the second portion of that is aspirational and it encourages the next steps for coast. So you're supporting reuse of the building and you are encouraging the coast uh, approach. But you're not endorsing it.
Great. And so uh, my last question I think would be so this resolution can't necessarily be uh used as an advocating piece.
Other than to say that you are encouraging reuse of the NOAA building.
Great. Thank you very much.
May we have a vote, please? And thank you, Ms. Kendell, for writing the resolution.
You're welcome. We have a council member Coletti moving, council member Tomlinson seconding that motion. Uh, and here's the vote, Mayor Peak. Council member Coletti.
Aye.
Council member McAdams.
Aye.
Council member Pedori.
Aye.
Council member Smith.
Aye.
Council member Tomlinson.
Aye.
Motion carries six zero one. Council member Emilio absent.
Thank you. Thanks to everyone. That brings us to the end of our agenda. Thank you all for folks from the public that are participating. Staff, council members, have a very pleasant evening. Night, everyone. Meeting adjourned.
Good night.